Good evening, folks. I'd like to welcome everybody to the 7/23/2025 Budget Meeting for Council. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Mr. Van Berck, if you would, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Dale, Ty, if y'all want to join us up here at the table, this evening, we'll start with the golf course budget. And then they'll walk you through their equipment and capital projects. And then we'll shift into general fund. At the end of general fund, we'll go back and talk about, we covered a good portion of this at your last budget workshop on the personnel requests and the equipment and capital, so that we can finalize that. And then talk about any of the other funds that you want to talk about before we close out our budget workshops for the year and get ready for our public hearings. So with that in mind, council, if you'll open up the 2526 Golf Club budgets. It's the PDF that I sent you. Dale Ratcliffe, I'm going to turn it over to you. Unfortunately, David Taylor is not able to join us. He is in the Caribbean on a family vacation before his... Before his, in fairness to him, before his daughter goes off to college. I appreciate him doing that. So Dale... Conveniently for him, too, she chose marine biology as what she decided. What better place to go than marine biology? You got to make sense. My kids didn't think those kinds of things. So anyway, thanks, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the time here. We're looking forward to presenting the budget, answering any questions that you might have. I will first point out, and I guess you guys are aware of this, this is kind of a truncated budget this year. It's only for nine months. So when you first look at it, the numbers that are on here are not what we're typically used to presenting in a budget. We've got a little bit of shortened season in that. But we're still very pleased with this and wanted to just kind of piece up the highlights of this. First of all, again, truncated season, we're looking at the total number of rounds in this budget, 27,661. And we are looking at doing a lot of improvements and continuing to maintain and improve the assets throughout the year. But at the same time, we're still wanting to be contributing to our fund and the course of operating at a substantial profit level. Dale, let me interrupt you real quick. Need to close your mic? Okay, are we picking it up now? Is that better? Okay, so I'll project a little better here as well. I'm going to have to do it like this to get the paper further away from me. So total revenue we got for the year is projected to be $1,850,000. And out of that, you follow it all the way down. This is all based off, we've been doing this for quite a while now. So we've got some pretty solid numbers that we know that we can project on expenses, our cost of goods, pretty consistent and everything. This totals down to a gross profit after we subtract the operating expenses and the costs of goods sold, so $665,000. We've got some other fixed expenses, including the payment on the city bond, $262,500. But even after paying that, the course is still going to operate at an debt ordinary income of $354,265. And that's also for just a nine-month period. So the course is going to continue to perform well. We have, again, we'll have some capital assessment needs that we're talking about here in just a little bit. After making the, kind of backing back out some of those costs and everything, our adjusted net cash flow is $112,000. But that's also after taking into account some of the principal reduction payments that we've got. We have a cart loan out there. So our net EBITDA for the year is $476,524. And so kind of a quick run-through there, but these are, you guys are used to seeing these. And we're very confident that not only are we going to be able to do this, we really expect we'll probably be exceeding this. We are making improvements on golf course right now. For those of you who've been out there and seen it, golf cart path paving is going in place, tree work is taking place. The golf course is in great shape. We continue to get good compliments on it. And even our operations team is doing a good job. So we're proud of them for any head pull-up we may have. So do we have any questions on the budget? Okay. Charlie, we'll move on to, we can talk about our capital projects plan if we pause one second. I'm being told that apparently the microphone is... Just take it out of the stand and take a look at it and make sure. It's on the bottom of the microphone. It's on the very bottom of the microphone. Normally, I don't have people telling me they can't hear me.
It's posterity.
Okay, are we good now? Sorry about that.
We should have ended the light.
Oh, I did have the light, yeah. Now I've got the light and everything there, okay.
That was a good first round. Let's do it again.
Counsel, before we move into their capital and any questions for Dale or Ty on their rounds or their profit-loss statements projected for the coming fiscal year? None? Okay. All right, so we'll start, Dale, if you will, we'll start on the equipment side of things.
Okay, so on the equipment side of things, and one of the challenges we've had in the golf business and a lot of businesses out there are making sure that we kind of stay ahead of our equipment needs. The turf equipment we use on the golf course is kind of specialized. There are only a few companies out that we can go to for this. And the delivery times on them have really been increasing. We thought that once COVID was over and things would kind of get back to normal, that would improve. But so far, it has not. We're still seeing long delivery times of anywhere from 12 to 18 months and even longer. So the lead times on these orders has been really tricky. And one of the things I'll tell you, too, in addition to the nine-month period, it kind of has thrown me a little bit talking about the fiscal years here because of the change we're doing going from, to July 1st for that. So we've got everything here kind of ordered in the current year, like the 2425 current year. And some of this equipment, we don't expect that it's going to arrive till 2526 year after July 1st. Now, we'll make a note, I think that in this far column on this, you'll see the first two items there are Toro 3300 Troplex mowers. Both of those were ordered at the same time and will arrive at the same time. Just in that note, you notice there that the very last one, it says 2526 for the first one and 2527. That's just a typo. They're both expected to arrive in the 2526 timeframe. We have a John Deere ProGator, which has not been ordered yet. The John Deere equipment typically is coming in a little bit quicker. So we feel that if we get approval on that, we'd be able to order it in the 2526 year. And we will be able to receive delivery on that and put it into service, too. The Toro 4500 rough mower, though, is probably an extended delivery. They are actually a little quicker than the greens mowers, but we really don't know for certain. We'd like to order it in this year. And then we expect that we'll take delivery in the 2627 timeframe. And that potentially might come in a little bit sooner, but just to be on the safe side, we're anticipating that. Those are the major equipment needs that we'll have on the golf course during this coming fiscal year. We also have a couple of pieces that we're going to surplus and we will sell those off. They won't generate a lot of revenue, but we like to get what we can out of the used equipment if it's beyond the service life. So we will surplus those off. And we won't do that until we actually make sure that we've got plenty of utility vehicles in stock for our crews to be able to continue to do the jobs they need to do. Any questions on that?
Yeah, any questions for Dale on the capital, on the equipment side of things, before we move into the projects? Everybody's good?
Okay.
All right, Dale, capital.
Capital improvements. So this is something where we're continuing to make great improvements, great strides on the project. Again, I just mentioned the current paving project. We just finished up the tree project out there. We're very pleased that the golf operation is not only able to be a profitable operation, but we've actually generated enough revenues and funds and set aside stuff so that we're really continuing to improve the asset. And that's one of the things that were really important. And we're not managing just the business here, but we're also managing the assets for the long term. And we're in a very good position where we're able to continue to make these investments in the property. And so for the coming year, what we have budgeted right here, we've got number 10 green renovation and number 18 green renovation. We've actually spoken to you before about that, but we've managed to get the design work done. We've actually gotten bids on that work. And so the number 10 green renovation, which includes replacing the bulkhead that's failing in front of that green, doing some needed reconstruction and reconfiguration of the green for putting surface conditions, it's going to come in about $175,000. Number 18 green renovation is going to be a little more at $185,000. It's actually a slightly larger green. There's additional tree work that we want to do behind number 18 green as well to improve the light and airflow in that green. If those of you that have been playing on the golf on the course for some time, you'll notice that green's always been a struggle to maintain grass on. The drainage on it is not good. We get a lot of shade on there. And so those two conditions really contribute to a really tough environment to grow grass on. So these projects are really critical because it's kind of your two main holes on the main nine that we have here. Your starting hole and the finishing hole. And we've got a pretty, what we think is a very dramatic, and it's going to be a very good improvement to the design, but it will also improve the condition on those greens and make for a much better experience for the golfers that play on the golf course. At the same time, we need to do something on the chipping green renovation that's right behind the number one cove tee. That chipping green is used a lot, but it's actually kind of too small for the amount of work that we get done on it. There's some trees that shade that area as well. So the same architect and designer that we're working with on the greens renovation has done a really great design to improve that practice area. We would have different options for hitting shots into a practice chipping green like that. Number one cove tee will also reduce in size a little bit. That's already kind of a short hole there. We've got more tee area than we really need. We need more area for the practice area. So that includes a reduction and renovation of the tee area on cove number one, but also the expansion and doing some work around the cove, the green, the chipping green as well. Cart path replacement, we're going to continue our cart path replacement work. We did kind of stretch this out over several fiscal years so that we weren't taking a big hit all at once on it. And we're proposing to replace the cart paths on the pines course for a cost of $400,000. Simultaneously, we're looking at doing tree work on the pines as well, $125,000. Tree work is something that you have previously approved. And I can tell you, that's one of the best things that we can do on a golf course of this age. Golf courses are living, breathing entities. And as they mature, the trees actually kind of become competitors with the golf course. They grow into the light of the fairways. And those of you who are golfers, a lot of times when you first started out here, the fairway seemed a lot wider. Well, that's because they were. You know, it's not that you're getting worse as a golfer. It's the fact that the fairways are actually getting more narrow as the trees grow into that light. So in conjunction, doing the tree, the cart path, we'll do the tree work out there as well. We have some drainage issues. And again, these are some things, we've had a number of drainage projects over the years. That is going to continue to be something we work on and all. It's, again, not uncommon for courses of this age. And you see it all over the community here, a lot of the pipe that's in the ground is old. It is a metal-type pipe that's failing and rusting out. We get a lot of sinkholes around that because of that. So this is a pretty important project that we've got there on number four on the drainage for that one. And then on hole number 16, we want to construct a new gold tee for that one. So those are all really critical elements that are going to improve the golfer experience, but also improve the conditioning on the golf course and help us be able to maintain it better and really make the operation more efficient as well. We've also spoken some before about the pavilion and pro shop renovation. And this is a really exciting project for us. You know, the current pro shop that we have is a great building. It's a great to be in. But from a functionality standpoint, it's really not that good. You know, if you're standing in there and Ty's in there at the counter, you can't see anything that's going on outside. It's kind of really removed from the golf operation. And although it's a nice building, it's a great space to be in, being able to move this out into the pavilion area where we'll actually be able to open it up, make it more accessible right to where the golfers are and where they need to be to go out on the rounds of golf as they're making the turn on all three golf courses. And having all of that centralized in that location is going to make the golf operation much more efficient. And we feel like that's also going to improve the golfer experience out there.
So counsel, as you saw in your notes when we sent you this, in conversations with David and Dale, our management company, and with Bob Barkin, we all agree based on where golf reserves are and the amount that they're continuing to put into reserves month after month, year after year. The things that are highlighted in yellow, which is everything other than the pavilion that Dale just talked about, would be, we would envision that as being cash-funded through the golf operations. The pavilion pro shop renovation, we would see that as being a capital finance piece with, the city would take out the, would take out that loan, if you would, but it would be repaid by golf operations, by revenue generated. One thing that David and I talked about in the P&Ls, you don't see any food and beverage revenue in there, right? There is a chance, depending on construction schedule, when they're able to get started. Obviously, they can't start anything before February 1st on the pavilion because it's under the current license agreement until then. But we can get the ducks in the row and be ready to start right after February 1st and get that project going. They may pick up a month or two of the food and beverage revenue after February 1st, depending on construction schedule and how they're able to maneuver their operations, if you will. But that's kind of what we're looking at. So just like council approves the loan for the golf carts, right? But that's paid through golf revenue. This would be very similar to that. We don't have the terms on it yet, but that is something that, with council's approval on this budget, that's something that Bob will begin working on with David Langford, who is their finance person for Pinnacle, and get that lined up as soon as we can to bring it back to council for formal adoption on that loan. Dale?
Okay. I'd like to just hit, just for informational purposes and everything, talk a little bit about our plans and kind of looking down the road and pursuing some of the projects that we see envisioned for the future. One of this really thing, we've kind of focused a lot on the other courses. And the cove is still a great asset for the community here. It's a great little golf course. But unfortunately, it hasn't got the love that the others have gotten so much over the years. So it's time now for us to really start turning our attention to that. I think that once we complete the elements that are up here in the current proposed budget, we need to start looking at that. And the work out there really kind of mimics some of the stuff that we're talking about doing on the other golf courses as well. We've got cart path work. Tree project work on the cove is really going to be important. That one has grown together more than any of the others out there. If you look at some of those fairways, they're very constricted now. And that creates a lot of things, creates a lot of issues for us from trying to maintain the golf course, from the playability of the golf course, and believe it or not, even from the aesthetics, just opening it up and everything. When you come in and take out that first row of trees like that and open it back up and get it back to what the holes were originally designed, it's just, it's a much more improved experience when you're playing on the golf course. So we're looking at doing, same thing we did before when we're doing the cart path work there, doing the tree work. And there's some tree work that is in relation, direct relation to the cart paths. If you'll notice over the years, this is consistent across all golf courses. The majority of damage that happens on cart path comes from tree roots. So anytime we go in and we do cart paths, we take out those trees that are causing that damage because a lot of them have actually grown up right against the cart path. And there's no way to really have the cart path there without the tree damaging it. So part of that tree project work is to protect the investment that you're making in the cart paths in future years. But then there's an additional amount of tree work that we need to do just from playability standpoint, opening up areas, giving us light in the fairways and allowing us to grow the grass better where we need to do that. Probably the biggest renovation number that we see on the cove, and this is something that's really critical, is rebuilding those greens. Those greens have been, you know, they're the original construction on the greens. They were not really, they weren't really constructed to the way that we would want them built for the types of grasses that we're growing these days. That would give us an opportunity to go in and also reshape those greens. And in conjunction with the bunker project, really turn that cove experience into something. Right now, it's still kind of, I wouldn't call it the unfavored golf course, but up to three, it's definitely the one that people don't really think of first when they want to play. We think that we'd have a great opportunity to give you a true 27-hole facility because we're going to improve conditioning, we can improve the design, we can tweak it. The layout of the golf course and routing is perfectly fine. There's nothing wrong with that. But there are some improvements we can make to the greens and bunker renovations on the golf courses as we go. And then finally, one of the things that we really need, and this, again, happens in all communities when we've got as many houses around, is we need a good, accurate survey of the entire property. So that when we have someone coming up and, you know, disputing where that line is, you know, there's a lot of times when fences aren't actually on those property lines and people make the assumption that they are. And it would really help us out a lot to know and have all the property lines on the property marked so we would know the extent of what is truly our responsibility for maintenance out there. It even affects other things like drainage and stuff like that, making sure that we're on the property that we're supposed to be on and that our neighbors are on the property they're supposed to be on. So we've got that proposed, and those are all future projects.
Any questions for Dale and Ty?
Just a real quick one. And I appreciate the fact that you have this lined up and that you have current and future because that just speaks to my comfort zone. For the items that you have as future, are those intended to be cash-funded also? Or do you know yet?
Well, yeah, I don't think that we'd really even get into that. You know, currently, we're in a very favorable situation where we're producing revenue at a really good rate. And, you know, our, one of the things that we do typically in our budgets is we are kind of conservative. And we're not projecting and saying, okay, we're determined that we have to make this amount of money. If we are seeing that we're generating the amount of money that we think we're going to be generating, I think that we probably would be in a position to do that. We would not want to be making those kind of decisions at this point, though. You know, we'd come back to you with a recommendation. A lot of it would depend on how well we're doing with our reserve fund at that point, too.
Okay. Just recently, I had shared an email with Charlie regarding the croquet club. Is that something that you're able to address?
Yes, we are. As a matter of fact, first week of August, we are doing some, we're actually doing some work now in preparation on the golf course. We have sod ordered for that. We're going to resod the areas on the croquet green that they're talking about. And at the same time, we're going to look at the drainage. Drainage, by the way, I don't know if you guys are aware of this, that's been an ongoing problem there because the croquet green is down kind of almost in a hole and all the water drains down there to it. It gets a lot of water coming into it. And it's a, it's an area where we're really trying to maintain it at a high-quality level. So the answer to the drain situation, which they're worried about people stepping off in those drains and turning their ankle or something like that, we looked at it. It's really not an option where you can raise those drains because we've got to keep the drains down low enough so that the water flows to it. You know, unfortunately, water goes downhill and we can't fight that. So, but what we can do is we're going to get in, we're going to feather that out and make it to where the slope going down to the drains is not as severe as what it is. It will still be a slope going down to it, but we have to do that to be able to drain the water off the greens and also collect water as it's coming down that hill there. But we're currently set up, and if you've been on the golf course recently, you might have even noticed where we have a couple of areas out there on number 10 and number 18 that we're already doing work on. And we're going to be ordering sod for that. That's the first week of August. I think that we have that coming in. So we're going to take care of these problems at that same time, too.
I'm sure they'll appreciate it. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
As far as the number four cove drainage problems that we've got, we put some money towards that a couple of years, well, for the last couple of years to fix it. So what's the problem?
Different areas, different areas where it's coming up. It's not the same area that we're going in and fixing each time, you know. And unfortunately, Mayor, these pipes, as you know, you know, the bottoms of them are just rotting out. And in some instances, the whole pipe is, too. So, and there's a lot of drains that go under. Some of them are smaller, some of them are larger. You know, in some instances, we're able to go in, like we had a, we had one, not, well, it's been several years ago, where we actually had a company that came in and relined the pipe.
Well, I was going to suggest if we haven't done that there, it'd be probably a good idea to do.
Yeah, well, it is. The problem is, once it gets down to a smaller diameter pipe, it's just really not that feasible to do it. You know, they can't, they can't sleeve them. And then the other thing, too, is once the pipe's deteriorated so much that it's collapsing, which is what has happened here, they really can't do it. You're almost, you have to go in and do...
So we're going to be replacing that with PVC, right?
Right. Well, it's ADS, yes.
That particular fairway also takes a lot of water from a green, a green space area that basically originates at the maintenance area and comes under number one, comes under, I gotta say, it's a tarot tee, makes its way back behind Mariana and feeds all the way down into that, into that area. So it's a lot of water. It's a big drainage basin. So hopefully, with this work here, the goal is to, okay, now we have that fairway fixed. At least to the point where we get in a financial position where we can just regrade that fairway. Those that have played that, they know it's shelved or shelved going up from the tee box all the way to the green. There is a desire to remove that as much as we can. But that's not something that we're taking on right now. First thing we've got to do is just get the water moving to where it needs to move to.
Is there anything we could do with the concrete on number four for the spillway? Maybe go in there with maybe some leveling compound, something like that, and try to take care of that?
Do you know, we, just for an aesthetic purpose, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yes, we could certainly look into that if you'd like.
Because it, I mean, if we're going to finish things off, like and do drainage and that kind of thing, eyesores like that, we need to take care of those, too. I mean, really, it's, all it's going to do is start growing moss and mold and mill doing everything else and just look terrible.
And I think to one of Charlie's points, one of our concerns on that hole is there's such a concentration of water in there. There really needs to be an engineered solution to how we handle all of that. You know, one of the, one of the things that really has fascinated me about the whole area of TKK, you know, you're right beside of the lake. You've got all this elevation. You would think it'd be easy to get that water into the lake, you know. But it's not, it's really not so easy. You know, routing it and then sizing the pipe correctly, the topo that we've got on some of these golf holes isn't really conducive to it. You know, we can't upsize the pipe a lot in some instances because we can't get it deep enough. The terrace features on that particular hole are, you know, kind of inhibiting what we're able to do on that some. So that's something we can certainly look at. But I think that the broader picture is something we do need to look at. How are we going to handle that water, to Charlie's point, long-term there? Because there's so much of it, you know.
I mean, realistically, it may be that that pond has to be enlarged that's right there. But I agree with Dale. That's something that I would look at as a future project and get engineering involved. Because you really can't put much more in it right now. But there may be an opportunity to expand that, which at that point, I would say, yeah. Yeah, we redo the spillway, the emergency spillway on it and everything else. But put it in capacity where we can pipe more into it than what we're able to right now.
Well, I just want all my balls back that I've lost in it already before y'all make it any bigger, okay? Oh, yeah.
Any other questions for Dale and Ty on golf?
One, do I remember from a year or two ago, didn't we budget for laser leveling the tees? Wasn't that on the budget the last...
That was two years ago, yes, sir.
Did we ever do that, though?
Yep.
We did.
That work was completed.
Okay, I couldn't remember. Okay, I thought, and then...
I believe that was in y'all's first fiscal year.
Okay, okay. I just couldn't remember. The pavilion pro shop renovation, can you go over that million-dollar estimate, how you came about that? To me, just, it seems high sticker shock based on it's an existing building, right, that we're going to enclose?
It is an existing building, but we're having to retrofit a lot of the infrastructure in it from the plumbing. You know, the bathrooms are not really designed for what we need in terms of the capacity of what we're going to do. We're also redoing the kitchen area, so there will be some limited cooking needs in there. So we're doing drainage, air conditioning. A lot of the building is open-air right now, so we're having to put in air conditioning like that. The way we arrived at that, we do have a plan. I think you guys have seen the footprint of the plan that we have. And we sent that out and we got competitive bids on it. And so that's how we came to that number.
Okay, yeah, I just want to know, because if you started from scratch, a million dollars would be a Taj Mahal of a pro shop. And it's like, we're taking this and we're spending a million dollars.
And there's really a lot of good things that we're incorporating into that. You know, ball dispenser machine is going to be right there at the clubhouse. It's on a little offshoot of that building. A patio that's going out over the backside of it that we're going to hard-surface so that we've got an area for golfers to go out there and sit after the round of golf. They want to sit there and have a drink or something.
Or your tournament events and stuff like that.
Right, tournaments and things like that. And when we're having, you know, scoring for tournaments, we need a place for that. Now, we're not going to have it under that building, so we have to replace that out there with a patio area, too.
Okay, but yeah, you got bids. I just wanted to make sure it was...
We did, yes.
It wasn't just a, you know, wild guess. All right, million sounds good. Let's go with it.
Are those bids something that we'll get to review as well, or is that a separate process?
Typically, we don't bring the bids from golf course back to council. But, I mean, it's absolutely something that we can share, that we can ask golf to share with you.
With it being the numbers that we're looking at, I think it would just be good for us to have a reference point.
Most certainly.
And then my final question, and I know I've talked to you all about this before, so I'm going to throw it out there again. I think we need a net between the driving range and 10. I'm not talking a 200-foot net, but, you know, telephone pole height. Because I've literally seen three people hit with golf balls. And the wrong person gets hit in the wrong spot and is going to be, you know, the city of Johnny Smith. If you get my, I mean, people die from golf balls to the head.
I know a guy with telephone poles.
But I'm just, I mean, could we look at an estimate for that? I mean, obviously, it's not in this budget, but it just, it seems like a, you know, a problem. We already have a problem. It just seems like we're just waiting on a disaster. And everyone talks about it. Like I said, I mean, I saw a guy get nailed right in the middle of his back. Another foot probably would have been, you know, hauling him off. And so I'm just concerned about the liability of the city. If someone does get severely injured from a golf ball, and I'm sure you've been down at 10. You do not want to go right on 10 because then you're in the landing zone.
Yes.
Someone will die, yeah, exactly. Well, that temp green's in prime landing zone, too, for the big hitters. Yeah, no, no, I get it. But I'm saying it exaggerates the situation. And, I mean, even if it was only as high as those trees, you know, 10 feet over, it's going to stop 80% of them.
If y'all can just, just look until it gets some numbers and then we can talk about how that can possibly, maybe even happen with this coming fiscal year. We'll just have to look at the numbers.
Yeah, and I want to address one point on that, too, because it's, the sad thing is, is almost any height fence that you put there is still not going to stop.
Oh, it's not going to stop all of them, yeah.
You're going to have a reduction, but you're still going to have golf balls coming over that. And, you know, obviously, the higher you go, the fewer balls, but also the cost is exponentially more as you go up. So, but we can certainly bring some options on that.
Thank you. And even if, you know, we can't afford the top golf 200-foot net, which I'm not advocating for. But, you know, if it's 50, 60 feet and it stops 80% of the balls, I mean, we at least have made a good faith effort. we at least have made a good faith effort from the city. So, God forbid, someone does get clocked in the head, we at least, um, have tried.
We can definitely do that.
That's all I got, thank you.
Well, I would be happy to donate my time and my equipment and telephone poles to the city and frame it all out for you and everything else.
Just get by the net.
All you have to do is buy the net.
That's great. How, how, how tall of a pole can you get?
I got, typically, we, the poles that we would, we would have are 40-foot poles.
Okay.
So, they'd be a little higher than the tree. Uh, and I'll, I'll put it in, donate that from, uh, from my company to the city, so.
We'll follow up with them, work up the price.
Just let me know.
Anything else for golf?
Thanks for everything.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Great job.
Appreciate all the support.
All right, council, as they are making their way away from the table, uh, we'll pull up the, uh, general fund budget. Um, we'll start with revenues, um, just, uh, so I don't have, I don't repeat myself or forget to say this, uh, when we get down into the, um, into the departmental budgets, um, with salaries, just like we talked about in the first workshop, there's no new head count included in there. There's, uh, envisioning, uh, up to 4% uh, on, uh, with a COLA and a merit, uh, on the salaries, but there are, are no new head count numbers in there. Um, and with that, um, if everybody's ready, we'll go ahead and, uh, start. The millage rate, uh, is, is most of the public is aware, if not, they'll be getting notifications pretty soon from the county, um, that this was a reassessment year. Based on Act 388.
Is that right there?
Oh, good. All right. Based on Act 388, um, typically Bob has to run this formula, uh, the county ran it for us this time, uh, so there, there, this, these revenues envision us going from 89 mils to 85.1 mils. So, that's where you get, um, the, um, the collection, total collections of $9,177,857 in tax revenues. Um, you'll see we.
Where, we got the budget worksheet all department?
I'm on the general fund tab at the very top.
That's what I've got right there. Is that what you got?
This is the next one over.
Yeah, I got the.
I got it.
General fund, yeah?
All right. Well, good now?
Good.
Okay.
Because I was looking at.
I don't, I don't want to go any further if we're not on the same, if we're not on the same spreadsheet, so.
Okay.
All right, so, again, this, this envision is rolling the millage back from 89 mils to 85.1 mils. Um, and it, it, Ms. Miller's request, put together, um, just a scenario that I've got up on the sheet, up on the screens now. Um, council, I emailed this to you, but just, and I'll zoom in a little more so everybody can see it, uh, so you don't have to switch screens. So, um, from what the county has told us, the average, uh, increase due to the assessment in TKK, uh, is 15%, all right? Um, so, uh, just to put an analysis together, uh, using, um, you'll, you'll see in column B up on the screen, on a $500,000 house, owner occupied, it has an assessment rate of 4%. Um, that gives it an assessed value of $20,000. Uh, our current mill rate, as y'all are familiar, uh, is 89 mils, has been 89 for 14 years, counting this one? 15, counting this one. Um, that gives you a tax value per year of $1,780. I included a price per month because I do know a lot of people pay their taxes into escrow, uh, you know, as they're making their mortgage payments on a monthly basis. Uh, that equates to about approximately 140, well, right at $148 per month on a $500,000 house. Based on, uh, what the county has told us with the assessments going up, uh, or coming in, into play with that average being 15% on a $500,000 house, that takes up $575,000. Again, you see your assessment rate at 4% envisioning that being an owner occupied, uh, establishment. That gives you an assessed value of $23,000. Uh, at the current mill rate, it's basically an increase of $22 more a month, all right? So, it would be if we, if you remained at 89 mils, which you absolutely can under Act 388, because you can reclaim any unused millage from the prior three years. We've averaged about eight mils per year that we could have increased that we did not. Um, and by no means am I going to ask y'all to consider 24 mils by any means. Um, but if you wanted to remain at 89 mils, you can see the math there that gives you a tax value per year of $247 or $171 a month, which, again, on a per-month basis, it's about $22 more per month, um, if you, uh, if you stayed there. Um, and that's about a 15.5% increase over what they're paying now. So, it's, it's almost in line with what their home value will increase by on the assessment. Um, I've also shown it, uh, if it were at 87 mils. Um, again, that takes you down to $2,001, uh, per, up from where we are now to $2,001 or $167 a month. So, that's roughly $18 more per month, um, on, on your taxes, uh, that would come to the city, uh, or a 12 and a half percent increase. So, just under what that 15% uh, increase on the value of your house. Um, as I stated earlier, uh, we, we put it together at 85.1, um, because that's what it would roll back to if council does nothing else. That's where we need to be, um, or that's where we would be with the assessments. You're talking about $1,957 on an annual basis or 163, uh, uh, per month. And again, that's envisioning that house going from 500,000 to 575, so that's $15 more a month, um, or a 10% increase. Uh, Bob, um, as far as your total revenues to the budget, uh, Bob's done some calculations. Uh, how much more revenue, uh, if you can tell that to council, how much more revenue that brings in?
At 87 mils, it would be $192,233. $192,233 estimated, based on collection basis, almost 200,000, based on 87 mils.
And, uh, I don't know if you've got the calculations, at 89 mils, you're basically a, a $100,000 a mil in additional revenue.
About $106,000 a mil.
106?
Yeah, 106.
$106,000 per mil.
On full collection.
Do we know, so I know our, we have an increased taxes in 14, 15 years.
15, yes, sir.
The last assessment, did they roll back?
Uh, we didn't have to.
Stayed the same.
We, we were, were able to stay consistent, um, because of, uh, when you look, they, they take into consideration, uh, your, your, uh, percent of population increase, whatnot. So, as those formulas were run, um, in 2020, in 2015, and so on, we didn't have to roll back the millage, so we, we kept it, uh, we kept it flat. Um, so, and, I mean, and ultimately, what has helped us, um, stave off those, those millage increases has been the growth, uh, in our tax base. Um, it has generated the funds that we needed to be able to continue to march forward and leave our, um, excuse me, leave our millage rate at the same. Uh, it has brought in additional revenues, obviously, because you've got more people paying in, you know, uh, not just residents, but also the business growth that we've seen over the last 15 years, right? Um, so you've got more coming in, but we were able to keep that tax rate at the same, at the same exact level. So, at this point, we've, we would cross that threshold with the assessments. Um, so therefore, we would, uh, we would have to go back to 85.1 mils, but you can climb back up if that's what council decides to do. And I think we can get into that conversation maybe a little deeper towards the end of the general fund, uh, once we start talking about bottom lines and any adjustments and things like that to see where we're at. Do we need to go back, uh, climb back up, um, basically two mils, go up to 87, uh, from the 80, I say go up to 87. Technically, you're going down to 87, but you're going up from the 85.1. So, 85.1 becomes the new 89, if that makes sense. Yes, they, 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 they generated a report to Bob. Um, like I said previously, Bob generally runs, uh, has run that formula in the past, uh, and the county ran it for us this year. I think it's pub, because it was an assessment year, so, uh, they went ahead and ran that number for us and, and sent him the spreadsheet on that, so. Um, but yeah, the value of a mil in TKK is at $106,000. All right? So, back to our general fund revenues.
Are you talking about the value of a mil? Yeah. It, it, it has gone up, uh, probably what, Bob, would you say, maybe $15,000 a year?
Yep. I would guess that, Scott, I guess. I haven't checked that, but I would guess that, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and again, a lot of that goes into, uh, is, is generated because of the growth in the city, both commercial and residential. Yep.
Yes, sir. Um, your license fines and fees, uh, are totaling up at $4,58,705. Council, uh, on the last, uh, budget sheet I sent you, uh, this will absolutely make sure we're all on the same one. We did increase court fines and fees, um, because of where we are actually, so you should see a $90,000 number in there. It was, uh, we originally had forecasted it at 80, but as, uh, as we were able to finalize the, the, the books on, uh, on June, uh, you can see that year-to-date through June 30 is $94,554 on that, so we did bump that up to 90. Um, and again, and I haven't said this yet, I know I've said it in prior years, Bob has said it plenty of times, we always try to config, uh, figure our revenues on a very conservative basis, right? Um, so even on the, even on the taxes, we're using a 95%?
97 and a half.
97 and a half percent collection rate, uh, on that. So, um, your state shared revenue, um, that comes directly to us from the state, um, I shared with y'all, um, of kind of a five-year aver, or what our five-year revenues were, um, in a spreadsheet. The state has finally, over the last few years, have been funding that, uh, per state law at the levels that it's supposed to. Uh, again, it's a smaller number than what you're seeing for this year, but that's only equating for nine months on the fiscal year. So, that's at $260,878. Um, on your recreation, uh, we're showing a, uh, we're forecasting a total of $557,600. We're really only going to, it's really, you know, on your, on your rec revenue, which includes more than just our registration, includes tournament rental, uh, tournament revenues and things like that, um, you're looking at just one season of revenues, right? Uh, with it being a nine-month year. Um, you'll get a little bit of the fall, uh, in June, but you're not going to see a lot of that until the budget year flips over on July 1. So, uh, that's why we're showing that number. Um, and I'll let Dustin talk more about that, uh, when he comes up, um, for his part of the meeting. Um, obviously, um, you are seeing zero on the, uh, York County Recreation, uh, no need to discuss that any further. Um, our sponsorships, and it's just because we, on a lot of those, we build twice a year. So, um, yeah, on a 12-month, we've, you know, we, we put 54,500 in there, uh, on a 12-month cycle, and then everything else shows in your events budget, uh, from a sponsorship standpoint. Uh, so we're round about, just loose math, around about almost $70,000 in sponsors, uh, over the course of a 12-month period. Um, your park rental revenue, um, $3,000, uh, nominal fee there. Concession revenue, that's coming strictly from Catawba Park, um, at $4,600. And you can see, that's pretty much dead nuts on, um, what, where we're at through the month of June. So, again, your total rec revenue projected at $557,600. Your other revenue, um, and this council is where we made some changes, uh, on the year-to-date column, uh, specifically around the SRO reimbursements, and I'll touch on those in just a minute. Uh, our interest earnings, um, again, right now, we're earning 4.51%. Four and a half percent on a monthly basis, um, with the local government investment pool, so our money is making us money, um, which is great. Um, we don't ever, uh, budget to receive grant revenue. Uh, we have those line items in, in there so that as we do get grant revenue, we've got a place to put that. But we, yeah, uh, mainly in PD, fire, and partial rec are the ones that are primarily going after the, after, they're the ones that have access to more of those grants. Uh, obviously, T-cut as well, but just with general fund, those are your three main departments that, that have grant opportunities, and we account for those once those funds come in. Um, your trash fees, uh, Dana did a great analysis on there for us, um, at 840,448. Um, some of your other big numbers, uh, we do show the transfer from golf, is a little bit less, uh, but it's, again, equating for the nine months, and that was in the golf budget as well, showing under their expenses at 262,500. Um, and then, uh, again, once we hit 26, yeah, 26, 27, you'll start seeing that full, that full amounts, uh, showing up in there, uh, in the coming fiscal years. Um, I'm not going to go through every single one of these. So, I'll touch on your officer, your, uh, resource officer. So, we had been accounting, and our change was in the year-to-date, not in, not in what we're forecasting. Uh, we calculated that number at the, uh, 194,827. What that, what that includes is our recent, uh, 60% reimbursement from the school district per our agreement for our SRO at the middle school, and then, um, Chief Crosby and his team have been able to, uh, get a grant from the state specific for SROs where it's 100% reimbursement. Honestly, the 194,827 is probably a little light. Uh, that, that's just salary FICA retirement group insurance. We also get paid, uh, off of, uh, uniforms, uh, 100% for those two officers. We get paid mileage, we get, uh, reimbursed on training and things like that. We didn't include those numbers in there, uh, but those numbers will appear as, as the fiscal year goes on. So, um, we spend it and the state reimburses that, uh, at 100%. Uh, we're good to go at 100% for this coming fiscal year. And honestly, I don't see that being something that the General Assembly ever eliminates, because at that point, you're reducing your school safety. I just, I see that as being a very hard thing to do as a, as an elected official down in Columbia. So, that's, that's your, your, uh, your resource officer stuff.
One question about that?
Yes, sir.
The 60%, how old's that agreement and, and what, why is it, what, how did 60 come out?
So, it used to be 50%, and we renegotiated, um, I'm wanting to say 2013, 2014, as far as the timeline on it, I, I can pull that up tomorrow.
Is that because they're only there nine months out of the year?
Yes, that's because they're, they're only there during the school year.
Okay.
And the rest of the time, they're with us.
Got it.
So, yeah, um, so, and Fort Mill, uh, Town of Fort Mill has the exact same agreement as we do, so.
100% though?
100%, that just comes from the state. We get to use it, yes, sir. So those, those officers right now that are reimbursed at a hundred percent from the state, they're, they're out. You've probably seen some images of Officer Fluellen. He's, he's at TK Elementary, doing the do-the-right-thing cards and things like that. They're getting out and about, as well as our other two officers, Officer Canone and Officer Bowers. They're, they're out there hustling. They also have to spend a lot of the summer months catching up on their train, their required training and everything that they're not able to get done during the school year, the way the rest of the officers are able to, so. We don't get them at a hundred percent like we've got, you know, a normal officer, because they do have to do that training, but when we've got them, they, they are absolutely out there helping supplement patrol, doing a lot of our community-oriented policing. Yes, ma'am.
What triggers the renegotiation? You said it happened in twenty-thirteen?
So they, we had an agreement, and Town of Fort Mill had an agreement, and they wanted us to have the exact same agreement. We said, we absolutely agree, and us and Town of Fort Mill talked and had a conversation with the school district and told them that realistically, it needed to be at sixty percent at, at the minimum. And as that contract starts to sunset, we'll start having those conversations with them again.
And when does that, when does that sunset?
I'll have to tell you tomorrow. I don't have that contract with me right now, but I can get that to you.
I like the renegotiation conversation.
Mm-hmm. I mean, obviously, we want to be good, good partners with the school district, as we always have, but, you know, in, in that, it's, it's not an exact price, so it's sixty percent of the salaries and benefits of whichever officer we have in there. So this is configured based on Sergeant Bowers being at the middle school. Any other parking tickets? You can see, we're doing quite well there, and I'll let Chief Crosby talk about that whenever he comes up, and we're talking about PD. Again, very, very conservative number, we're forecasting at six thousand dollars. You can see where we're at year-to-date, nine thousand, nine hundred and fifteen. And if he's watching or gonna watch later, thank you, Officer Kenny Buck. He is our Class Three officer, and he is doing a fantastic job for us there, enforcing those rules. And again, a new revenue line item for us is the restaurant license fees. That, and I, I explained that in an email, but just for the public that may be watching this, that is based on the pricing that we have in the draft contract that went out with the RFP on four months, okay? Not, yeah, basically, because they're paying the following month for the preceding month, you're looking at February, March, April, May, even though the fiscal year goes to June. So we figured that conservatively, you know, not knowing any kind of down period they may have in February and things like that, or what, what made you get negotiated with counsel as counsel makes a decision. So we figured that on a, on a somewhat conservative basis, at fifteen thousand a month for four months, plus the fifteen hundred on the Glennon Center for four months. So that's where you get the sixty-six thousand on there. So that gives you your total net revenues at fifteen million, or your total gross revenues at fifteen million, eight-hundred-and-ninety thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. And again, that is considering that at eighty-five-point-one mils. So with counsel, really not a lot of changes in there, other than it being a nine-month fiscal year, other than, as everybody's aware, we've got, we'll have election expenses. But the filing fees that, that are charged for candidates that are running, that goes to help offset that cost. We're right about where everybody else is. I think Rock Hill may be more on their filing fees, but, again, eight thousand seems to cover that. The only time we don't have election fees is when there is a federal national election happening at the same time as our election, and then they have to do the election anyway, so we really don't have any expense when that happens. So that's what we're forecasting there. On the group insurance, not knowing who's gonna be on counsel come January and, and things like that, and who's going to opt-in on the group insurance, we're basically figuring it on three like we have right now. So that number could go down, that number could go up, depending on what happens post-election and come January. But other than that, your counsel budget's pretty straightforward. You can see, we, we did reduce down the, the travel and training expense. Yeah, if, if that is something that this counsel thinks is important, and we need to put more money in there, now's the time to let me know, so I can put those numbers in. Or you go with where it's at. Two of y'all did the municipal elected official stuff, Carmen and Brian, but, I mean, those were very negligible expenses. So, I mean, as you can see, a hundred and eleven dollars. So, yeah, and the good thing is, is MASK has put some of that training online on demand for you. So it cuts out the travel expenses and stuff that they used to have in there. But, yeah, the, the biggest expense that ever came out of that historically has been attending the, the annual meeting. Usually, it's either in Myrtle Beach, or Hilton Head, or Charleston, but counsel has elected not to, to attend those for the last, at least the last three years, so. And if that's still the case, then a thousand dollars should cover the travel and training. Anything on, any conversations or changes y'all, y'all want to see related to counsel? All right, Judge, if you want to come on up, for any questions counsel may have, again, salaries and wages. This includes our judge, our assistant judge, or administrative judge, who's also our clerk of court, and the, the same increases that, that I've already mentioned. It also includes budgeted for a solicitor position, which is still open. It also includes payments to, we've got an agreement with Judge Sexton, who is a magistrate with the, with the county, so we also have a county agreement as well, because he works for them. But he, he helps us out on our own-call rotations, bonds and things like that, where if we have to transport somebody over to the mosque, and it's not a high crimes, or a general sessions, I should say. So we've got, we've got an allotment in there as well for them, per the, per our agreement there. So that makes up your salaries and wages, and Judge, I will turn over the operational side of court to you with the, the only numbers that really Judge doesn't generate, Bob generates, are gonna be your bottom three numbers. That's the reimbursement to other governmental units, the victims assistance, and then the public defender. We have an agreement with the public defender's office over at the county, and that covers us on indigent defense. So that way, we don't really have to worry about making sure that's handled right. They, and that's our percentage of what their salary is, and they update that every year based on the amount of cases that they have to work, and that's between us, Fort Mill, Clover, and York. Rock Hill had so many cases, they've got their own different agreement, so they're, they're not counted in that, in that calculation. So Judge, I'll turn it over to you.
For the most part, we've kinda kept everything the same, I think, based on a nine-month budget. Kind of just essentially slashed everything in half, for the most part. As you've seen, a lot of the times, I'm traveling training, I've tried to only use what is absolutely necessary instead of wasting you guys' money. So for the most part, that's kinda where we are. As Charlie did say, with the victims assistance and the public defender and the reimbursement of other governments, those are just based on the cases that we send, and everything else is, for the most part, staying the same outside of just the cutting it into nine months instead of twelve. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions on court? Yep, and then we've got a solicitor's position that's open, and then Judge Sexton.
So myself, our clerk of court is also an admin judge as well, so if I'm not available, she, so she has a dual role. And then we also have Judge Sexton, who covers two weekends out of the month for me, and if someone goes to the mosque overnight. And then, I'm assuming the solicitor is also in that budget as well.
And, and we, we currently do not have a solicitor. It's something that we're, we're trying to get somebody, but it's, it's really not a, for part-time, relative part-time, it's not an attractive, so to speak, so trying to find somebody in there is, is proved a little bit challenging, but it is something that Chief Crosby and I have discussed at length, that it would definitely benefit our officers so that they're not trying their own cases against attorneys like they are, like they're doing right now. But we, we are trying to get one, so we've still got it budgeted for, with the hopes that we can get it.
The victims assistance item, I'm glad that's in there, but I'm assuming it's like if someone's domestic violence, and they put them up on a hotel and get food and stuff like, okay, stuff like that.
Correct, yes, sir.
Anything else for court? Great, thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judge. All right, admin, again, doesn't, doesn't envision any new headcount, or things of that nature. Also, we'll talk about the one requested new headcount, once we get to that part later on, after we finish General Fund. So your medical expenses, that would cover any pre-employment, physical drug screen, things like that, whether we have to replace somebody, or in anticipation of, of being able to, to add one to, to that staff. Primarily, you've got, well, four of us sitting here at this table. You've got Janet Broom, who is our IT manager, is in there. You've also got, Dora is in there, I'm trying to think, oh, Casey, Casey's in there, us four, and Gretchen. That, that's, now, some of our, like, mine, Bob, Dana, and Dora, a, a small percentage of our salaries are also show up in some of the other funds like T-Cut, Stormwater, just because of our work in there. It's very small percentages, the bulk of, bulk of it's here in General Fund. Bob, I'm gonna let you talk through a, a good bit of these. So let's, let's start with what's in professional services.
Professional services is debt book, we subscribe to debt book. Auditing, that's a fee to the auditing firm per year, twenty-six thousand dollars. Data processing is the payroll processing. Contracted services, that's York County billing services, billing us.
So, yeah, so York County bills us for taxes collected.
Fuel.
Just like they do with Stormwater.
Admin CAC, codify audiences, that's Casey, that's six hundred dollars, minimal amount. Office supplies, we're, we're down, based on ten thousand dollars. Bank fees, that's merchant fees, bank fees, et cetera, they're always going up. Travel training, that's the conference, any conferences that Charlie and et cetera go to?
Me, it's primarily me, Dora, Casey, Joey, Dana, little bit Gretchen. There's not a whole lot of travel training, conference kind of stuff for her, but there, there, there is minor amounts in there that she's able to do.
We have, we have cell phone posters, we pay them, it's equipment, small amounts. Software maintenance, that's the, that's QS one, Dana, most of it? Dues and subscriptions, we pay that early in the year, ten thousand dollars to York County. Copy lease, well?
That's not just, no, dues and subscriptions also includes professional affiliations for myself, Joey, Casey, Dora, with our professional affiliations, like ICMA, SECMA, SHRM, the Municipal Clerk Treasures Institute, things like that.
Copy lease, IT expenses, minimal expenses, and HR training and development, that's, that's Dora, traveling. But that's basically it.
I want to talk about copier lease, so we were able to, actually, you're gonna see in, as we go through the budgets, you're gonna see where all of a sudden, oh, there wasn't anything budgeted this year, and there isn't amount this year. That's because those had been coded historically in supplies. So Dana has portioned those off into actual copier lease, because, understanding that that has been a topic of this council and prior conversations, as well as prior councils. When you look at the total amount, though, it has decreased, we were able to get better rates. So if you add it all up total, it's actually gone down, we have not added anything new. But you will see it appearing in some of the departments where it happened before, and that's, like, I'll use Fire, for example. They didn't have a, they, Fire, yeah, and Court. It was just being shown in Supplies, and now it's being shown as its own line item. So it's pulled out of Supplies and put into a copier lease line item, just to make it more readily identifiable. What questions y'all have for us on the admin budget?
I got one, Charlie. Do the salaries and wages, does that include a assistant for HR?
No, sir, not yet. We've got that over on the personnel capital request, and I was gonna cover all of those once we finish General Fund, but if we want to discuss that now, we absolutely can, it's counsel's prerogative. Or we can discuss, discuss them each once, once it comes up.
We can do that?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. And that's, that's gonna be the case across the board. So directly related to General Fund, you've got a total of five new personnel requested. None of those are in the General Fund budget, they're sitting on the other side, until counsel tells us, yes, we can put those in, and we'll make those changes going into the public hearing at first read that you'll have on August eighteen. What are the questions on admin?
Not a question, but just an observation. If I'm looking at this correctly, and I did the formula right, you're at a zero percent increase-decrease, like you had a flat budget for, for your admin.
Pretty much, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We, we try to run it tight, as tight as we can.
I like seeing the copier money go down.
Yes, ma'am.
I like that a lot.
That's thanks to, to Dana and Janet.
Thank you.
Getting us a better deal on that.
I just see the increases, but the decreases were much bigger.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Any other questions on admin? Okay, Development Services, Nick, if you want to make your way to the table. So counsel, the first, I'll say the Monday, when I sent this back out to you with the updated year-to-dates, we actually had a, our, we were able to fill a position, as I've told some of y'all. Maddie left us to go to Samaritan's Purse. It was a dream job for her, she was super excited about it, we hated to lose her, but Nick was able to recently fill that position. Look forward to y'all being able to meet Theo at some point. Got his master's degree from the University of Glasgow in Scotland. Got his undergrad at USC, and I think he told us that, oh, it was at Winthrop, that's right. And when he looked at grad school, it was gonna cost the same to go to Scotland or stay in the US, so off to Scotland he went. So he started with us on Monday, so updated that, that salaries and wages, it came down slightly, not, not a tremendous amount. So with that, Nick, I will turn it over to you, my friend, to run us through the operations.
Yes, so I will, I'll start with, with professional services, that's one of the larger amounts in the budget. So that is primarily made up of our agreement with CCNI, who does our building inspections. So they primarily do, I would say ninety-five percent of our inspections. Our building official will go out for special cases, maybe to do a second look, or if someone calls in with something, an emergency, he's able to go out and do an inspection, but they, they come to the city every day at this point.
Correct.
Exactly.
Yes.
Yeah, and they've done a great job, they, they have.
I think the biggest thing that helped there was some of the hiccups we had in the beginning, was being able to implement the, the Evolve permitting software, has made a tremendous difference, keeping every, you know, the contractor, the homeowner, and us all on the same page.
Absolutely, yes, so that makes up, like I said, most of that. The software maintenance, that has, that's going down significantly. The ninety-seven thousand for this fiscal year was the implementation of Evolve. So now, it comes down for the, just the annual maintenance, which is charged in March, I believe. Exactly, so we're about three-quarters of the way there on that, so look to have that finished up by next fiscal year. And then, those are the, the two large items, the comp plan update as well at the bottom. So look to have the comp plan adopted hopefully by the end of the year, so that, that will completely be eliminated. That's going to the Catawba Regional Council of Governments, who is, who is working, working us through, through that.
And we don't foresee having to pay the consultant anything after October one.
Correct. So if you have any questions about any of those or any other items, I would be happy to, to address.
And I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear, and the professional services, tell me what that was about again?
Yes, so professional services, so to, to really break down those numbers, so the CCNI, this is, we, basically, they charge us on an hourly basis. So, you know, each time they come to the city, it's fifty dollars an hour.
Is that our auditors? That's our building inspectors?
Building inspections. So the last fiscal year, you know, we were doing our best guess, because they'd only done two or three months of it, so doing our best guess to budget, so at this point, we have a lot more data, so we can really nail down exactly how much per month, you know, we're spending on that. So the, the increase for that is resulting in getting our numbers closer to what is, in actuality, the inspections that are happening. With that being the first time we've used them, you know, we were, we were close, but this is much more honed in on what the true figures are.
And Dana, to confirm, the reason why your current number is a little off, they're a little slow on their billing, so we haven't actually captured exactly what that looks like.
Yeah, they've built through May. You've also got some engineering services in there for, like, plan reviews, things like that, and those are minor amounts. The bulk of that is gonna be CCNI with the building inspections.
And with those building inspections, I'll add, they, not only have they done a great job, it really, it's really an assistance to us and to contractors, because versus us having one individual in the office, you know, individuals are sick, they take vacation, whereas CCI is a team of, I'd say, five to ten inspectors. So unless it's a holiday, they're gonna be there. So that's really, get a lot of good feedback from our contractors for that, so.
Any other questions for Nick on Development Services?
Is your total number really down ten percent?
Say it again?
Total number?
Yeah, like your.
Annualized?
Yeah, year-over-year.
I mean, yeah, I mean, you've got seventy-three thousand in comp plan, dick goes away. I mean, that's, that's a big deduction.
Right, and that's, doesn't have, won't have to be updated until five.
I just wanted to make sure I could celebrate.
Yeah, comp plan and software look like the two biggest reductions, right?
Exactly.
Anything else for Dev Serv?
But good job pointing it out, Carmen, because that's, that's a great win.
Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, Nick, great job, I appreciate you.
All right, Public Works, unfortunately, Tim and Chad are not able to be here, because they are, as they were last night, and again, tonight, they are out riding around, or will be here pretty soon, counting deer, updating our deer content.
They came by last night.
So we'll, 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 once that is completed, I'm imagining probably sometime next week, we'll be able to update counsel and the public on what we're seeing from a numbers standpoint there. So between Joey and I, we will go through the, through the Public Works budget. Operationally, again, our salaries and wages, not asking for any new employees. They are still short one, I believe, but actively interviewing, trying to fill that position. As you look down through here, your fuel, we forecasted that pretty much dead-on. You can see what the year-to-date figure is there. Most of our uniforms get bought in the first nine months, but you can see a minor decrease there at that ten thousand dollar amount. And that's for their, their shirts, and then we give them a, an allowance for, twice a year, based on them being able to get shorts, they're able to get pants. So instead of using a uniform service, we've been doing it this way for a number of years, and the guys really like it. And, yeah, so that, that has worked out very, very well there. Trying to go, let's see, Joey?
Yeah, I was gonna say, your biggest change is street. Yeah, I was going to say your biggest change is street maintenance.
Yeah.
And simply because, you'll see a big reduction out of that because the sign project within the peninsula, the signs have been purchased, so there will not be carryover with that. We will look to go outside the peninsula in the coming years, but not in this upcoming year.
Most of that $100,000 is going to make, for this nine-month period, is going to make up the next phase of the sign replacements, as well as any patching that we do internally. Most are contracted patching, which is, the stuff that we do, we're capable of doing more, but we would need to purchase a lot more equipment, and that just doesn't make sense. We've had very good success, and Tim puts together a list, bids it out. Same with the sidewalks. So most of that work gets done in July-August timeframe. So you're not seeing that. That's why you're seeing a 50% reduction on the nine-month instead of just a 25%, because most of that larger-scale items wouldn't kick in until after the conclusion of this fiscal year.
Charlie, I got a question about the signs themselves. You know, most all of our signs in the peninsula were on lamp posts.
Correct.
And we took them off the lamp posts.
Correct. We've put them on the post that is in the MUTCD.
Yeah, we got square tubing.
Follow them with DOT.
Yeah, but Lake Ridge and Cameron Creek and a lot of those places, they're still on the lamp posts. And personally, I think the lamp posts look really good. Square tubing is what the MUTCD prescribes, but I just would like to understand the thought process behind taking the lamp post. I mean, if we got to hit them with a little bit of black spray paint to get them looking really good and put them back up.
Well, that's part of it, is to decrease the maintenance, decrease the purchase price. You know, especially like Lake Ridge and things like that, those were developer-installed, not city-installed. A lot of what we're going to be replacing are your sign blades, street sign blades. You also look at your stop signs and things like that, that have been out there for a number of years, needing to be replacing. As far as those posts go and things like that, unless the post is damaged out there, typically what we've done is left the post, that lamp post, as you call it, that decorative post. But once it's, if it's hit by a car or something like that, and it's damaged, we're replacing it with the square tubing and following the MUTCD.
Well, that's a big thing, is safety, is because those poles will break away from the base where those light poles are, you know, the decorative poles do not. So that's a big part of why we've transitioned to that.
Is that a required change, or is that a suggested change?
It's something that, it's in the MUTCD, is this is what they must do as far as SEDOT. And as much as we can, we follow that MUTCD.
Okay. I just want, I wanted to hear the must out of that, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's, I mean, for, as an example, the MUTCD, and Mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they're planning on putting in the rapid flashing beacons, but it's not in there yet. And that's why DOT has been giving us a lot of pushback. But they have, a lot of it has to do with the mayor's work in conversations with DOT. They are allowing us to put one at Seven Coes and one at Callaway. The flashing beacons, we're waiting on them to send us their plans. Tim and I had a great meeting with them last Thursday. And as soon as we get the plans, Tim will put it out for bid, as well as file for the encroachment permit with SEDOT, so that we can get those signalized. We had hoped to get it done by the time school started, but obviously, that's not going to happen with school starting in a week and a half. But it shouldn't be soon, much further after that. Hopefully, we can bring that bid to council at either your August or no later than your September meeting. But right now, we're just waiting on them to send us the plans. But they had a good site visit with Tim the other day, so.
Is this where the work on changing out the crosswalk or painting over, or redoing the crosswalks?
We had that conversation with DOT as well, and they are kicking it to their maintenance department. We met with the district traffic engineer, as well as the maintenance director, or, I don't know, the, he's the right-of-way manager, is who we met with. But they are pushing that to maintenance to try to start scheduling the crosswalks on TK Drive to redo those.
Thank you.
But as far as the crosswalks that are, and stop bars that are city-maintained, that painting and stuff like that, that comes out of street maintenance.
Is that part of the budget that we have to consider? That includes that? So that's something that's going to get started on?
We do those, we do those as needed, as far as the ones that are ours. And they're typically done July-August timeframe. So you're not going to see a whole lot in this fiscal, in this coming fiscal year. But they, it's something that they work on every year, going around and hitting ours, the ones that are controlled and maintained by the city.
So basically off of TK Drive?
Off of TK Drive, correct. And off of 160 Dam Road, New Gray Rock Road, that type of thing. Yes, ma'am.
Couple clarification points if I may. So it looks like the salary increase projection is about 4.5%. Is that, am I seeing that right?
It only includes a 3% and a 1%.
Okay.
For nine months. So it may reflect slightly higher, because it's not just a true, use 75% of it. There's 20 pay periods from October to June 30. So it's based on those 20 pay periods.
And I thought I heard you mention something about this, but I may have missed it. So fuel, it's like it's going down?
It's up.
Am I seeing that right? Fuel expense?
Fuel expense, slightly.
Okay. We anticipating a change there?
No, not really. It's just based on experience and what we're seeing. Keep in mind, as we did, as we did the budgets this year, gas was well over $3 a gallon.
True.
Now you're looking at 280, 285. So it's just, it's just looking at what we're, what our fuel costs are and number of gallons we're using. A lot of the fuel we use is the off-road diesel for our equipment and things like that, and we've got a tank for that.
Thank the good Lord that's coming down too.
What?
Thank the good Lord that's coming down too.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Can we talk about trees a little bit, tree care?
Okay. So tree care is our preventative pest maintenance. It's basically Bartlett tree. So it's fertilizer and pest maintenance, and it's primarily on the trees on Stonecrest Boulevard and TK Drive, is what that number is. Your tree work, which, yeah, down there at the bottom, that's just for hazardous trees and things like that that come up, whether it's on our green belt, or it's a, you know, a storm hit it, and, you know, we need a contractor to come in and help us out. That's what, that's where that, those dollars go.
Okay. Just, just a general comment. I see and hear of a lot of, a lot of aging-out trees, leaning over, falling down, pretty unkept-looking in common areas. Is that, do we have any plan on any cleanup there? Are we just going to let them decay, or what?
We let nature take its course. Yeah, we, if it's leaning, we get it on the ground, especially in the green space, things like that. We render it, get it down flat, get it safe. Should I pause? Okay. But as far as trees that are flat on the ground, in our greenways and things like that, we leave those, we'll leave those, let nature take its course.
Or anything like that.
Correct. Yes. Yeah. Now, I know our park maintenance guys have been making a concerted effort as they can and fit it in the schedule, and you'll probably see more of it in the wintertime. This is the time of the year where they are drinking from a fire hose, as Dustin will attest to when he comes up. But, you know, some of the trees along the trail, they've already put a dent in those. Some of those old trees that got blown down in storms and things like that, getting those removed. But, yeah, things, I'll say like, along the number eight fairway, right? As you look off the side of TK Drive to the right, as you're headed towards Windjammer, we let those trees do their thing, once they're on the ground.
All right. Fair enough. I would imagine that our biggest expense is probably going to be in the next three months with tropical storms.
Potentially. Yes, sir. I mean, usually July, August, September is when we start getting those big pop-up thunderstorms, high winds, things like that, those microbursts.
Right.
Just whenever Charlie goes downtown.
It's basically when I go to town.
Storms come in.
Any trips planned?
Yeah, we can, I will be, I will be out for a little while on the 5th. I have to move my daughter back from summer school at Clemson, but it'll just be for a matter of hours.
We're only $20,000 in on a $35,000 budget, so we have room.
Yeah. So. Any other questions on Public Works?
No, good there.
All right, great. Okay, Chief Crosby, if you'll make your way up.
Hello, Chief.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Not going to spend time on the salaries and wages. It's the same as what we've, what we've discussed under prior salaries and wages with other departments. So Chief, if you'll start with driving us through your operational budget, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Just for a point of clarification from Ms. Miller. The renegotiation of the SRO contract is done 60 days prior to the end of the district's fiscal year. So we can renegotiate that this year if we wanted to. Also, because we are on a grant with Fort Mill School District, we tried to convert that grant over to the state, but there's a stipulation that if you're currently on a grant, they will not convert it to the 100% grant. So that's why it stays at that rate supplied by Fort Mill.
Okay, thank you.
All right, council. We will start, we will start with 5-0-200, which is the overtime budget. Currently, we are at 3% unencumbered. We're expected to be over on this line item. We have had some situations to where we have separated employment with a dispatcher, which caused us to have to have coverage needs in that area. Plus, we've also had some medical coverage that we've had to do. We've also had an increase in productivity, as you've seen by our monthly summary reports that we've been releasing. And as a result of all that, some of that causes us to have to have paperwork that is mandatory to be done before the officer can go home. So they're required to stay for it to go through judicial process. Also, our community events cost us a fair amount of money, about $9,000 for us to do our community events. Plus, our K-9 program costs us about $8,000. So that's where a large portion of our overtime budget comes in at. Moving to 5-0-100, which is the medical. We are 100% encumbered as of June 30. As of July 21, we're 107% encumbered. We're expecting about another $4,000 outstanding expenditures to be had in that line item. The reason for the increase in this particular line item is because we have enhanced our hiring practices. We've always asked for a physical to be done, and the state of South Carolina has always required a psychological test for any uncertified officer that's going to the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy. As I've shared with you before, there are a lot of times in an officer's career where he or she is, sees a lot of trauma in their life during their career. So we have taken the extra step that we are doing a psychological test on every officer that we hire, as well as we've implemented a polygraph test. So they get an initial pre-screen psychological test, psychological test, and then a polygraph test, plus a medical examination to, as, to be part of our team. As a result of these things that we have implemented, we have, and you'll see in our later presentation, we have had people, because of their background investigation, be disqualified, not just because of these tests, but also because of their background investigations that we've had. So it's yielded a good result from us to make sure that we're getting the right team members to serve our public. The South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy will reimburse us for any uncertified officer that has not had a psychological test. So those funds do come back to us. But again, it's hard for us to estimate what those funds are going to be, because we don't predetermine if we're hiring a certified or uncertified. We're hiring the best candidate possible. So I'm not able to tell you I've expected this amount of money back for those reimbursements from the state of South Carolina. Uniforms, which is line item 5-2-200, we are currently 64% unencumbered as of June 30. 68% as of July 21. We're expected to have outstanding expenditures of about $13,000. That is because we have to pay for vests that we have ordered, plus the carriers, plus some uniforms and other equipment that we have ordered. You may ask about the difference in the amount and why so much is left over. Two reasons for that. We have had new hires that you approved for us to get last year. We could not get cars on the road until May of this year. So the two hires that you have allotted us as of October of last year, we are just now being able to advertise for those because we just now got cars in May to put those officers inside the cars. So we have that money that came back to us, or is in that funds. We also estimate there to be about a balance of about $20,000. But you're also going to see in the overtime budget, I told you that I was going to be going over in the overtime budget, I estimate anywhere between $8,000 and $10,000 in the overtime budget. Because we went over in the overtime budget to balance out our overall budget, this is an expenditure amount that we can control and tighten up on. So we made sure that we monitored our spending so that we could be a balanced budget at the end of the year. Some things that you may not be aware of, that you may say, why do you need so much money in the uniforms budget? For an officer to get three shirts, that's long sleeve and short sleeves, three pair of pants, and a pair of boots, costs us $715. That's just for them to wear the uniform. Now, what we try to do is we try to do the pants every year, because they get washed every time they go home. We try to do a set of long sleeve or short sleeves, and the boots. But if they have like a need for a jacket, or rain jacket, or some other type of equipment, then that, that is not included in that amount. So just to give you an average cost, I gave the city manager and the finance team a breakdown of all of the costs of equipment that we're paying for right now, from handcuffs to radios, to lapel mics, to rain jackets, hats, things like that. Cost has gone up. So as you see, $715 just to outfit an officer in clothes, that's what it costs us every year just for the clothes. We do get a grant from the state typically each year from this, for a reimbursement of our vest. It is not guaranteed money, as the city manager said. We average about $5,000, $4,000 a year in that grant. So when we do purchase vests, we're able to get that reimbursement back. Again, but it's not something that we're...
He's referring to your traffic safety vest, not your bulletproof vest.
No, that is, it's the bulletproof vest.
That comes from DOJ, not MASK.
Correct. You get your DOJ grant every year, is what we put in for. And so they give us reimbursement for our bulletproof vests that we buy. But it's up to that $4,000 amount. If we go over that, then it's out of our pocket. Okay? MASK also gives us a grant, which we don't use our mask grant for traffic vests. We use ours for software maintenance, for some of our high liability software that we have. But we also ask for that as well. 5-2-800, which is supplies, 35% unencumbered as of June 30, 31% as of July 21. We have outstanding expenditures of about $6,500. We have to buy some batteries. Some other equipment and supplies, ammo is also being purchased to come in. We've seen an increase in cost, and I'd be very surprised. You could have been a victim notices. They were relatively unexpensive, and now those costs have gone up pretty significantly. Employment testing has also gone up. Traffic cones have gone up considerably in price. And then also in-car paper, as you've seen our productivity going up, we're using more papers in our cars for the citations and things, and warnings such as that. Travel and training budget, we're at 42% unencumbered as of June 30, 43 as of July 21. We're expected to have about $10,000 outstanding expenditures. We have a liability training that is, all supervisors will be going through that training. And then also, we must buy our TASER cartridges to fulfill our TASER requirement. Officers has to fire at least one TASER cartridge, and so we're buying those extra cartridges. Those cartridges alone are right at $150 per cartridge.
Do they expire?
No, sir.
They don't?
No, sir. Wish they would, so it'd hurt so bad, but, you know, they don't.
High slip points to be tested.
Yeah. I'll be glad to arrange it if you'd like to do that. This year, this year, we've had 2,500 training hours so far year-to-date. So we're still on track to have a good productive year in regards to training our officers. I'm happy to report capital outlay. There's additional funds in the capital outlay. We saved about $5,000 per vehicle last year that we bought. Major Patterson, Captain Holliday did a wonderful job of shopping around to find who had the best prices on the vehicle. They also worked really hard to renegotiate our contracts and our prices with our car, our companies that outfit our car and sticker our cars. So we were able to save about $5,000 per car.
Good job.
And then finally, and I must say on that too, as you see as requested amount, we do beforehand, I say we, they, I got to give them the credit. They do call around and say, what is the price on cars ahead of time? So we can, when we present that figure to you, it's because we have called and asked. And they're saying you can anticipate cars to cost this much this year. It happened to be when we went back to this year, we were able to call around and find cars that were either like a late model and able to get a better price. So that's what happened to us there. Community outreach, you may be asking yourself, why are we asking for 100% of that, of what would be a nine-month budget? It's because all of our community events typically fall between... It's because all of our community events typically fall between October and July. So we have to pay for fees such as National Night Out. We have to buy the hamburgers and hot dogs. We have to buy all of the gifts that we give away during these events. So that's why we need those fundings for the entire year, so we can pay for that. Okay? And then finally, if counsel and the city manager and the finance teams approve, with the remaining funds that are left over from this year, we could, we called Motorola today and spoke with our vendor. We had asked for you to consider us, to allow us to buy three new radios in this upcoming budget. We could potentially, with the funds that we have unencumbered, we could potentially get them out of this budget and get them in in time for those funds to come out of this budget and save that $30,000 in the next budget. So that's just for consideration as y'all are doing that. Okay? Any, I got one other thing for you to consider, but is there any other questions that you have about the operational budget that I can answer for you?
A few.
Sure.
If I may. Salaries are projected to be up 8%?
No, sir. Right now, they're currently, what he has is in line with what the city has, is recommending. But I have another presentation for you here in just a moment.
So if I look at the annualized salary and wages of 2.733,500 compared to 2.522,961, unless my math's off, that's 8%.
I would defer to those folks.
Bob, am I wrong? Yeah, the annualized number for 25, 26 compared to current budget, 24, 25.
Oh.
Yeah. And if there's an anomaly there, I understand. Just give me a heads up on that, if you get a chance to look at that, please. Group insurance is down?
Mr. Bob takes care of those numbers for me.
Got it, okay.
It depends on single-family coverage.
Okay, got it. All right. That's, that's an interesting number to see down. That's pretty good.
I think in all Dana, what was, would, we factored in 5%? Excuse me. We are anticipating a 5% increase on the premiums in total.
Okay. Workers' comp insurance looks like it's down by 33%. I haven't seen insurance go down before.
Workers' comp has been very good to us lately. We've had some decreases.
Good. Is it?
We, we have, they give us.
We haven't had any claims?
Not gonna say that, but we've had good experience.
We get, we get, they have a surplus at the end, in June and July, and they give us back somebody in June and July, depending on the claims of the pool.
Sir.
We've been lucky.
Right, right. Well, I'm hoping you're saying nobody's getting hurt, and they don't have any claim. Hopefully, everybody's staying safe. Yeah, right. Indeed. Yeah, that's great. Question for you, Chief Joey.
Yes, sir.
Does every officer have their own vehicle?
Yes, sir.
They do?
Yes, sir.
Do, tell, and this isn't a challenge, just for my information, why don't we share vehicles between shifts?
So there's actually a study that was showed that if you have each officer having a vehicle, you reduce your costs. It is more on the front end to get the car, and when you start the program. But on the long term of the whole entire program, you're also saving costs on maintenance and things such as that.
Because if two officers are gonna put more miles than one.
They end up taking, really get care of their cars when it's there, because it's their personal car. Kind of going into, well, a separate thing is, is really a, also a recruiting and retention as well. Every agency around us has this particular program. And so we see that as officers are not able to have that particular benefit, it's a major impact on them. Finally, the big piece is, and my goal is, is to get more officers living in the city. If we can do that, that is more police cars that are on the road, and then people are seeing the cars. And so if we can do that, it's a great benefit to the city for us to have that.
Okay, thank you. And we operate with three shifts, right?
No, sir. You have, you have four shifts, A and a B shift, and then a C and a D shift. They work 12-hour shifts.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. All right.
Then also, you have traffic detectives and SROs, or the community team as well.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks.
And Mr. Charlie, to answer your question, yes, from a 12-month to 12-month, it is showing at 8%. Bob and I'll go back tomorrow and reanalyze that number to see why.
Okay.
And I'll report that back to counsel.
Thank you.
Isn't that based off of the year-to-date number that we have, and then you guys project it from there?
We took total salary schedule for a 12-month period and reduced that down to 20 pay periods instead of 26 pay periods, because that's how many pay periods we'll have in the nine months. We put, we factored in a 4% increase, like we did with all the other staff. So I'm not sure why that number is looking that way. We'll go back and reanalyze that to see, and we'll report that back.
Thank you. Full staffed?
Four. We have four, down four.
You're down four.
And we have a conditional offer out now.
Is one of the four the dispatcher?
No, sir. So we have a conditional, sorry, we have two conditional offers, for dispatcher, for an officer, and then down four.
Okay. Any, I didn't hear you talk about any additional headcount requests.
The request for additional headcount is in dispatch. I can't in good conscience come to you right now and ask you for additional offers when I'm down by four. When I'm back full staff and I can show you stats, then maybe I'll revisit that. But I can't in good conscience come and ask you for that.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Did you say that you had lost your dispatcher? And that you, that was part of the overtime is because you're having to fill in? So is this offer that you have out to fill in that spot, or?
It's that open spot, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's the current headcount that I have.
Okay, but you're asking for a second dispatcher?
I'm asking for an extra body count in dispatch.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Any other questions about operational budget? So we do also have one other request to ask of you to consider. As we've talked about, had discussions about officer salaries, the market in this area has drastically increased police officer salaries. And we've recently seen this with the increase of York County and what they have. So I want to share with you some data that I have collected and we reviewed as the department, and then make a recommendation to you. In 2024, we had four people total that departed the department. Three of those were self-initiated. Of those three that were self-initiated, one of those cited money as being the primary reason for their departure. We also had one that was department-initiated separation. In 2025, so far, we've had seven departures total. Four of those are self-initiated. Of those four, three, the primary reason why they departed our agency, was cited because of money. Three also separated at department-initiated separation. This year, we've received 52 applications. Of those 52 applications, 21 have not responded once they submitted the initial application. Six of those withdrew their application. 14 of those, we disqualified initially. Eight of those, we moved to a background check. And five of those, we disqualified in the background check, which meant we hired three people out of those 52 applications. As you look at the salaries around us, York County Sheriff's Office just increased theirs to be $61,081 for a new officer, $64,992 for a certified officer. Fort Mill and Rock Hill, we fully anticipate that they will be, Fort Mill, after their comp study and their adjustments, we expect that they will at least be very close or match or exceed York County. The same thing for Rock Hill. Rock Hill, with their budget, is probably is expected to match or exceed York County. Of the three that left, we had one officer that left us that went to the neighboring Chester County. That officer had five years of experience, got about a $5,000 increase. We had another officer that left and went to Lancaster County. If you look at Lancaster County's career ladder, that officer got anywhere between a $5,000 to a $10,000 increase to go into that agency. We had a sergeant that left us. Great officer, great community oriented guy. Went to another agency, he got a $7,000 increase to go to another agency. I'm asking you to consider this. I did a breakdown, and when you look at the monthly cost of expenditures based upon a salary of $54,000, and I'm not talking about living an extravagant lifestyle, I'm talking about just having basic expenditures, home, electricity, groceries, cars, internet. On that 54,000, $54,500 salary you're talking about, the officer is in the hole of $112 a month. I do want to share a story with y'all. Currently, right now, we have an officer with little less than three years of experience. That officer is a very hard worker, a very good asset to our organization. That officer pays their monthly bills out of the first check, doesn't have anything extra, just what is necessary. And then they have to live on a credit card to their second check. Then they have to take their second check, pay off the credit card, which they have very little funds then to live off of the rest of the month. Right now, I have three officers that live in the city. Myself, a retired NYPD officer that has 20 years, that we just brought on, should be graduating the academy soon. And we have another person that was a business person that lives in this city that we brought on as well. So what I'm asking for you to do is, as you can see by the numbers that I presented to you, we're not getting the quality of applicants. A couple of years ago, you were very gracious to us, and you gave us an increase which put us near the top of the pay salary for agencies around here. We're now, because of everybody's movement and anticipated movements, we are down near the bottom. For, give you an example, for York County Sheriff's Office, they're paying a certified officer $61,081, and we're paying them $54,500. It's a significant difference. Talking with the chiefs and sheriffs around the county, as we meet each and every month, before, we were seeing people stay, you know, if there was a $1,000 or $2,000 difference. Now we're seeing people jump and go into different agencies, just because the money's different. So I'm asking you, if you would, to please consider allowing us to increase our starting salaries and then do the associated bumps with that salary up and down the chain. On my proposal, as I looked at everything, we went line by line, position by position, looking at the agencies that I've used as benchmarks here and told you about. Our request is to do a certified officer starting salary at $63,100, uncertified at 59,99, 59,954, and then allow us to make the adjustments through our organization based off of those numbers. Doing this, it will make us very competitive with the other organizations. It does not put us at the top, but it makes us very competitive with the other organizations and those that are around us that we're fighting for with the agencies, trying to get those quality applicants. We're trying our best to put together the best team possible, and I think you see that by the numbers that are being produced each and every month, by the complaints that you are not getting right now with our officers being professional and performing their duties in the correct manner. And so I'm just asking you to consider the compensation for them in this budget. The city manager and the finance team was very gracious. They worked very hard with me and actually did more work than I did with the calculations and what it would look like to the budget and how it would impact the budget. So I'll let them share that, those numbers with you.
Based on Chief Crosby's request, it would have, on this nine-month budget, a $206,341 impact. And I can show that number now, or I can show it after we finish non-departmental down at the bottom to show you what that looks like, along with the other request. Very close.
Chief, one question about your, the numbers you came up with.
Yes, sir.
That's still gonna be lower than county and most likely Rock Hill and Fort Mill, right?
No, sir. So if we, with the numbers that I just come up with, if we start at 59,99, 59,954 for uncertified.
What's the county starting?
County is starting, their end number is 61,081. So we would give a 5% just like they do for graduating the academy and an FTO, which would bring the certified number to 63,110.
I was hearing a 59, that's what I wanted.
Yes, sir. The other thing that I want to share with you, just to kind of put this into perspective. County's number right now for a three-year officer, they're paying $64,992. Everybody below the rank of sergeant in my organization doesn't make that.
Where would our three-year be?
The three-year number with this increase would be at 65,003.
All right, thank you. I thought they were lower.
Three-year certified would put you at 65,003.
Just to keep it simple in my head, what's the, what's the increase difference that you're looking at from certified, from existing to new, and from uncertified, from existing to new?
From existing to new, so uncertified currently is $52,000. It would go up to 59,954. Currently certified is 54,500. It would go up to 63,110. Three years is currently 56,135. It would go up to 65,003.
And you said that would put us where in the range from the area?
Put us slightly above York County, but below Lancaster County. Now again, we're anticipating, we don't have the numbers, we don't have the confirmation. We don't know exactly what they're gonna do. But we fully anticipate Rock Hill and Fort Mill being very close to what York County is, because they gotta be competitive as well. So we're anticipating.
Rock Hill has confirmed to me, their manager has said that they will do everything to match what, where York County is. I've not gotten the same from Fort Mill, but as Chief Crosby indicated, they are looking, they are completing their comprehensive plan, or compensation study, sorry. And we anticipate that that's where, they're gonna get close. They may not get all the way, but from conversations especially that Chief has had with, with their folks over there, they're gonna do everything they can to get close to where the county is.
Question for you.
Yes, sir. Sure.
Because I'm far from a law enforcement expert. So what's the difference between a certified officer and a municipality and a certified deputy?
So we both go to the same academy, we both have the same classifications. One is just called a deputy, one's just called an officer. So when I say uncertified, that means for either agency. That person's coming in, they've never been to the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy. They have to go to the academy, do the full thing, and then do a full FTO program. A certified officer means they're coming in with either a South Carolina certification or a certification from another state.
Okay.
Now, the South.
Can we recognize all those?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Because the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy, we send off their training records typically. They will accept their certifications, and they do a modified academy, which is only four weeks here. Then they go off to Columbia, take a test, drive and shoot. They come back, they're certified, and go into a modified FTO program because they have prior certification. So we call it certified because the state is also recognizing as their certification.
So if I, if I work for you as a three-year certified officer, I can go to work for the county? And everything crosses over, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm turnkey.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And that's kind of what's happening.
It's apples to apples, that's what I'm getting at.
That's exactly what's happening.
Okay.
So the last time that there was a salary adjustment was two years ago, when there was a big.
We had a lift there.
Like a report, right? There was a study done.
Compensation study, yeah.
So it seems like there's, there's like a salary war that happens, that competitiveness. Is that, is that pretty much what we should think through in this? That it's, this is something that we're going to have to look at and every two-year type of thing?
So.
I like to, I like to kind of know what's coming.
Certainly. I, I can't tell you that and give you assurance that it's not going to happen. What I can tell you is that my colleagues and I, we have been talking about this, and we all agree at some point, it's got to stop. It's got to slow down. And how do we do that? We've all got to collaborate together and say, okay, we're gonna get to this point and hover at this point. And if someone wants to go to Rock Hill, I get it. You get a new person that's straight out, they're 21-years-old, out of college. They're looking for that excitement of Rock Hill, of being able to kick down doors and running and chasing somebody every night, and that adrenaline. They may not be necessarily the fit here for Tika K. So if we all say the same, we can all recruit, but we're all recruiting for those people that fit our organizations the best. And so that's what we've done with our recruiting strategy. We understand that that 21 or 22-year-old may not be the best fit for Tika K. And so when we recruit, we let them know, hey, do you, we, I share end-of-the-year stats with them, with every person that I interview. So they know exactly what they're going, our expectations are here. You know, we want you to engage with our community and what we're looking at. So to answer your question directly, Mayor Protemp, I wish I could tell you that to give you comfort. My hope is that it'll slow down, because it needs to for the market.
Yeah, it's not necessarily comfort, it's just trying to figure out if a decision that we make today is going to be something that we might be looking at to make later.
I'll answer it this way, what history is telling me currently, and past behavior is indicative of future behaviors, history tells me, probably so, for the short term, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Outside of salary, are there any other incentives or benefits that are being offered?
Yes, ma'am. I do a incentive for those that have degrees, and then we also do incentives for those that comes in with years of service. We do those as well.
And is there any, anything that is being? And is there any, anything that is being offered by, by the other municipalities, by the county, others, other cities that we, we are not offering?
Everybody's doing the same thing.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think one thing, Chief, and correct me if I'm wrong, well, two things. So one, it's kind of stating the obvious that, you know, Tika K's probably the most expensive place to live in the county. And so that makes it difficult on, and not just police, on all the staff, right? I mean, because, uh.
Correct.
Well, they gotta commute. Um, but then second, um, as you stated with your stats, and, you know, I saw it before I retired. The culture's changed and you just, not as many people are looking to go into law enforcement, so it's making that recruiting much harder. And if we're not competitive, you're gonna end up base out of need just to have officers. If you get to a point, it might not fit the culture, but you have to man the road. And, and then you get problems potentially.
Correct.
So I'm saying, I think what you're saying makes sense, we, we gotta, we gotta pay our officers or we're, we're either not gonna have them. Or we're gonna have people that, uh, don't fit Tika K, and it's a different type of policing here from a community orientation.
And, and I keep going back to this, I, I, I look at their current performance. I mean, we've got an awesome team. I, I've shared with y'all the exits interviews with those individuals that left us and how they talk highly of the organization. My team that's behind me, they work extremely hard to have a good culture. Now, is it great every single day? No, I'm not gonna tell you that because we're reali- realistic. But we're working very hard to have a place where people get to say, I get to come to work, not I got to come to work. We're trying to find people that understand their why, they understand their purpose. And then we fulfill that and we tap into that, because if we do, then we're gonna motivate them and get the best out of them. Which is what you're seeing through our team now. You don't get complaints about our team. I don't have people running around doing unethical and, and, and immoral stuff. They're true professionals, they're working hard, they're trying to make this community the safest place, and they're proud to be called the safest city in South Carolina. And I wanna keep them, and I wanna add others like them.
I think we're all, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention and doing the detail that you did, that you presented to us. We definitely want to maintain the, being the safest city that's out there, and we want to attract the majority and the best of the best that's out there, that wants to come here. And in order to do that, we definitely need to pay them. We have how many officers on, on staff currently?
Uh, you're down four right now. So right, you have, I have to go back and look at my numbers.
I think fully staffed. Fully staffed, I think we're at thirty-one certified, including command staff.
Yes.
Okay.
And so you're at twenty-seven.
Okay, and then the two-hundred-six-thousand number that you just said, it, it'll affect every officer.
Correct.
Correct? And get them up to where they are?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Because the other thing that's so important about retention to look at too is the cost that it costs to train them. And get them prepared and ready for the road, that when they have three to four years in here or two years in here. Or like when we lost that sergeant, that was a significant hit for us. Uh, because there was a lot of money invested there. Uh, but I, I couldn't argue with him when he told me what it was for.
Just wanna maybe share a thought and open a conversation with, with you, Chief. Business I'm in is completely different than your business, it's a much safer business, it's a retail business. And, um, I have a very, very key role that I'm hiring for right now. And I received a hundred-and-fifteen applicants for that role and I'm hiring one person. I'm really blessed to get that many applications, but I'll tell you, a hundred of them probably aren't worth talking to for the role, because they're not experienced, they don't fit the culture. They don't, they're not what you're looking for either, right? But I'm gonna have to give each one of them a fair opportunity and spend the time to speak with them and find out the value that they can bring to our organization. And how we can make them better. Uh, in, in doing so, I'm, I'm thinking about your organization and your department. And I'm so proud of you and the team that you have behind you, that you have, all of you collectively have built a remarkable culture here in the city. And have maintained, uh, an image in our city that we are the safest city in South Carolina and probably the safest city in many, many states. And, uh, and we're very proud of that and proud of the work that you've all done collectively to do that. And I'm wondering if the culture that you promote, the events that you promote, the, um, the values of coming to work here. And the safety that the officers have working in a community like this compared to a Rock Hill or a Charlotte. If, if we're, we're doing everything we can to market those values and, and it being less about price and more about value. And, and in my business, we talk about that all the time. The price is the price, but the cost is different. And, and I, I want you to get the full value out of that when you're talking to candidates that are coming. Because you have a lot to offer.
We do, and so, one things we've done is that we changed our hire process drastically since I've been here. Through the expertise of Sergeant Timms, uh, or Lieutenant Timms, he spent a lot of time there. One of the things that I compliment him on is he started this initiative, he'll get people that'll call and say, hey, I, I wanna come, or what do you think about Tika K? Or I wanna apply with Tika K, and he'll say, before you apply, come do a ride-along. And they're like, huh? They're like, come see for yourself.
Right.
We can tell you, but come do a ride-along and see for yourself.
Day in the life, man.
And you'd be surprised how many people we actually have come, do a ride-along. When they come, they see me, they see Major Patterson, they talk to us, they get to interact with us, they see the culture of the department. The one thing that I disagree with in law enforcement right now is a lot of agencies have one recruiter. I don't want one.
Right.
I want thirty-one.
That doesn't tell them the team.
Yeah, I, I, I want thirty-one recruiters. And you'd be very surprised how many times that we get folks that come to us interested in a position. Because of our team members and how well they talk about the team and working here for the city. And, and that's what I, I agree with you. There's also value, but then also the psychological part of it and knowing about Maslow pays also that first rung in Maslow's hierarchy. And if you don't have it, you're not getting the rest of the way, and so that's why I'm presenting this to you today.
Fair enough, thank you. Appreciate you talking through that.
Yes, sir.
Anything else for Chief Crosby?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Chief Hasty, if you'll join us, please, sir. Is, um.
Okay, excellent.
And, and as I said, um, as far as Chief's request and things like that, uh, we'll touch base back on that as we get through, uh, towards the end of, uh, general fund. Um, along with the other, uh, requests that are not showing in the, in the budget that we're working through right now. So, again, salaries and wages doesn't include any new headcount, uh, in fire. Chief's gonna touch on some of your, uh, some of the operational, uh, budget items, and then we'll take any questions that, uh, that council has.
Good evening, Chief.
Mayor and Council.
Evening, Chief.
Hey, Chief.
So, we'll just start at the top, the, uh, the biggest, if you, if you look at the budget, year-to-date on some of the things we've already got. Uh, year-to-date on the medical expense, that's a pretty significant, uh, overage if you look at the requested, right? The, uh, and I'll explain that to you very quickly. So, uh, we do our physicals typically in August, so that, that money has not been spent yet. So that's why there's a, a pretty significant difference between budget and year-to-date. Uh, so those are coming up in August and, uh, we'll try and get all of our firefighters through. We're very similar to the PD in that every firefighter has to have a, an OSHA physical every year. Uh, so we send everyone to those physicals and they are expensive, so, uh, that's, that's where that budget line item comes from. Uh, uniform cost, you guys can see that there is also, uh, a substantial amount of money left in that. We've got, uh, five sets of turnout gear that has not been paid for out of that. At, uh, a little over twenty thousand dollars apiece, or twenty thousand dollars total. And we've got some miscellaneous helmets, coats, boots and those things, and it's some uniform wear for the firefighters. We are very similar, uh, to the PD in that we budget, uh, four-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents for firefighters, for uniforms, for, uh, station wear duties and those things. So, uh, supplies, uh, you guys can see, we've spent, uh, about ten thousand dollars, uh, year-to-date. Our request for next year is eleven-two-fifty, which is, uh, a reduction from what we requested this year. Uh, what we've done is we've trimmed some things and we've reevaluated how we do things, some of our processes have changed, uh, to reduce cost. Uh, so we wanna try and do that in every way we can. Uh, travel and training, you guys can see, uh, if you look at those numbers, uh, that are budgeted for this year was forty-four thousand four forty-seven. Uh, year-to-date, we spent sixty-five seventy-seven, we've got some classes coming up, uh, that will cost us some money. We've had to move some classes, uh, because in our world, we have trouble with instructors. So, uh, we're having trouble filling classes with instructors, and so we're having to push some of that money. Uh, we're gonna leave money on the table, uh, for this budget year, and we're gonna push that money in the next budget year. We've got several classes, one, it's, uh, a cost of about twenty thousand dollars, we're having to push that into next year. The time you look at the training cost and overtime, so that, that, that piece has not been incurred yet. And that money will, like I said, just roll into next year, so. Small upticks in several other line items, uh, nothing substantial. Let me go back to uniforms for just a minute, we've got a, uh, a pretty significant increase there. Uh, the reason we're, we've got an increase there is we've got a, what's called a bailout kit for our firefighters. It's a safety piece of equipment, uh, so if we're on an upper floor in a house, uh, you guys know, uh, Tika K is one in the front. You're looking at, from the street, you're looking at one story, the backside's three stories in the air, right? Uh, we have, because of building construction and those kind of things, uh, we need a way out for our firefighters if something happens. So the bailout kit is actually a piece of, it's a, a harness, basically a climbing harness and a rope system to get those firefighters out. Uh, the reason we haven't done it, uh, year-to-date, we didn't have a way to train them to do it locally. So, uh, we, if we're in process, Mayor and his family helped build and a lot of city staff helped us to build a prop out behind the fire station. So we're gonna be able to deliver that training here, uh, probably in the next three or four months. So if this is approved and we get these firefighters this safety, piece of safety equipment to take care of them. Uh, we will be able to offer that training here in Tika K and allow them to have the training they need to exercise and to use that device.
Was it basically rappelling gear or something?
It's very similar.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the rope is Kevlar, so, uh, heat is not affected as much. Uh, it is a, uh, it basically is climbing equipment, it's a friction device to allow them to slowly be lowered to the ground.
Right.
Instead of just fast rope, right?
That's great, yeah.
So, uh, that's, that's what the significant increase is in that line item, so. Uh, software maintenance, just some of the things we see, we're, we're being, we're passing on cost from vendors. So a lot of our uptick is from costs that are being passed along, so. Uh, with that, I'll answer any questions you guys have.
Chief, the building and grounds maintenance that we've got in there, is that mainly for Station Two?
It's for both buildings.
Both?
Well, yeah, we're having to do some things, and there's, there's, uh, we've got some sprinkler things that we're having to do now, uh, five-year and three-year test and those things. They have not come out of that line item yet, uh, it's just annual maintenance. Uh, we've had to do some outfit, uh, you guys know, we, we upfit the kitchen at Station Two, uh, last budget year. Uh, thanks to the contribution from you guys and from the citizens, we've, it's a little better place than it was a year ago, so. Uh, and the guys did the work, they installed the cabinets themselves. So, uh, trying to save the city a little bit of money, the training props that we built, uh, most of them are constructed and built by our firefighters. So, uh, you know, just to brag on them a little bit, uh, we talk about training, uh, we spend a tremendous amount of time training. Our firefighters have got over three thousand training hours already year-to-date. And, uh, man, it's incredible, my hat's off to them. Uh, a lot of expectations, uh, we've got a lot of technically skilled firefighters. And, uh, we fight the same battle, trying to find people and, uh, qualified people. Uh, we've got a compassionate group, a well-trained group, and, uh, they're committed to the community. And, uh, you know, I, our community service hours are, are up tremendously. Uh, we're out in the schools, we're back in the schools, we talk to every third grader right now in elementary school. So, uh, we're, we're out meeting the community where they are. Uh, we too are a fire-safe city, uh, similar to the PD. The, uh, fire-safe designation is really important to us, uh, our team is committed to that, and, uh, it shows. So we've, we've raised our community engagement budget just a little bit, that's actually a fairly new line item for us. Uh, that used to come out of supplies or training, and, uh, now we've broken it out, thanks to city staff. And, uh, we utilize those, those monies to buy fire prevention education materials and those kind of things, so we can reach out and touch the community.
Well, Chief, it looks like to me you need to spend a little more money on the community relations part of it, because Crosby keeps wearing you guys out with swag, I'm just saying.
Well, you know, he's, uh, some days he's jealous, he keeps threatening to bring dogs and stuff, you know?
But could get a dalmatian, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm allergic.
He might lose the water pipe, though.
So the reason that we can't have a fire dog is because you're allergic, really?
Yeah, to a dalmatian.
They've got peels for that, you know? We can be different, Frenchy or something like that, you have to do that.
There you go.
Question on the, um.
Yeah, I do.
On the platform or ladder truck.
Uh, it'll be here, uh, so hopefully we'll see that, uh, we're supposed to fly up the last week of October, do a final inspection. So they're saying sometime probably the third, fourth week of Oc- of November, it'll be here in Tika K. Yeah, Thanksgiving present.
And then, uh, when do we start getting billed for that?
So we're already making some payments on that.
We're already being billed on it.
Okay.
Like you, we had a payment this, in this current fiscal year on it.
So, would that be under apparatus and equipment?
No, it's under.
Equipment lease? Okay.
One eighty-nine, seven sixty-eight, that is the ladder truck payment.
Alright, so what's the difference between apparatus, equipment and equipment lease?
So apparatus and equipment is loose equipment, uh, equipment to fight fire with, those kind of things. Yeah, hoses, a hose is crazy expensive.
I bet.
Uh, uh, just as an example, five-inch hoses, the hose we put on the back of the truck, connect to the fire hydrant. That's about twelve thousand dollars, uh, just for one truck. So, yeah, I, you know, it's, it's, it is what it is, and, and, you know, they put a life on it, so we test it, we use it as long as we can. Once it starts failing the test, we take it out of service.
Okay.
Uh, most important thing we can do is make sure our equipment's ready to go to take care of our community.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Hasty before we move to Parks Recreation?
So are they gonna drive the truck down?
They're gonna drive it here.
Are they gonna put it in reverse when they get back and back the miles off of it like?
It's funny, I asked you the same question, can they put it on a flatbed and deliver it?
You know, in, Manfred Funderburgh and I talked about it the other day, some things about them driving it here is good. Some of that, they can identify any quirks or issues it may have before it gets here. Uh, it'll have a few miles on it when it gets here, and, uh, we'll spend three days training on that truck once it gets here, and then many hours driving, trying to learn how to use it.
Is that a Pierce or is that?
It's a straight lighter, sir. It is Pierce.
Does, does this have a bucket on, on the ladder?
No, sir.
No, I didn't.
It is, it's a straight lighter, yes. Hundred and five foot steel.
I hope some of your community budget goes to a big welcome.
We're gonna, we're gonna do a special ceremony when that truck comes in.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think it should.
Don't hit it with a champagne bottle.
But it would be cool to have the community have a time to go and see it, cause I mean, that's, it's, it's a nice little hat on top of the, this, your department. You know, it, it deserves some good attention.
It is, this needed, uh, the, you guys have heard me say it before, but the ladder that we've currently got has been a great truck. It's twenty years old, uh, it's given us some challenges, we're gonna try and keep it as a reserve piece, uh, but it's too short, quite honestly. Uh, you know, we've been able to reach our destination with that truck one time, uh, to do what we needed to do to fight fire since I've been here. You know, we use it as an elevated master stream or water stream, uh, to put the fire back in check, so we can get in with hand lines and take care of it. But it truly is, uh, the, the new truck is technologically advanced and it'll help us to take care of our community.
Does it have a snorkel on it?
It's got a waterway on it, yes.
It does have water delivery?
It does, so the, the waterway will be the same length as the ladder.
Okay, right.
Chief, just to clarify, oh, sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Well, go ahead, Mayor.
I was, can you clarify, I thought when we agreed to this truck, we were gonna sell the old truck.
So that was the, that was the conversation, we had talked about selling it, it, it will benefit us more in reserve. We've got a service truck that we're actually gonna get rid of. Uh, it's causing us some issues.
Gotcha.
Uh, and in order to, to continue to maintain our, our ISO rating, we need to keep a service truck. We get the same service credits for this ladder that we get for the other. The other truck is a nineteen ninety-one Ford eight-hundred.
So this, but we won't have all the maintenance costs and stuff we have now?
No, sir, we won't, it won't be on the road every day, so it, it will be a reserve piece.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief, have we, have we had any, um, movement as far as any kind of grant help or anything from the feds or, I know the state, they're, they're not giving us any help, so.
Yes, we are, we're actually back in Senator Graham's office, we've reapplied for the appropriations money there. It's a USDA grant, it's five-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars, and, uh, we're, we have reapplied for that. So, they said that they're very optimistic, it looks good, we'll see when we get there. We'll see when we get there.
Awesome.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Any, has, has Senator Scott reached back out to you or anything?
So, he was not able to help us. His office was not able to help us.
I'm, I'm pulling straws, you know, 'cause I know Ralph, Ralph Norman said he couldn't help us. So, you know, but I'm, I'm going to everybody.
Right. Yeah, we are too. Uh, we're trying to shake every tree and trying to, uh, get some help.
Have we approached, like, Firehouse Subs?
So, Firehouse Subs is not, not, not that much money, the...
I know, but I mean, every little bit helps.
So, we've, we've actually used them. That's how we got the, uh, the ski that we've got at Station One. And, uh, we have applied for other things there, for U T V and those things, to try and help us with our trail problem that we've got. So, uh, we continue to apply for grants constantly.
I just, you know, just, every little bit helps, though.
Yes, sir.
And I really like Firehouse Subs, so I, I try to keep them in business.
So, you contribute.
Absolutely.
They've been good to us.
Okay.
Anything else for Chief Hasty?
Nope.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, Dustin, if you'll move your way up here, please, sir. Um, no, uh, no personnel request, uh, for Parks Recreation. Um, uh, they, uh, just this week got back up full staff on their, on their maintenance side of things. So, uh, Dustin, if you will take it away, um, and touch on the operational side of things. If you, we can take a recess if that's what council needs to do.
I'm good. I'm okay for now.
I'll take a long time.
I'll raise my hand if I need to.
Take it away, sir.
All right, I think I'm, I think I'm situated. Good evening, council. I think you're only gonna see me one time tonight, so, uh, that's either a good thing or a bad thing, depending on who you ask. Um, we'll go down some of the line items, um, just as everyone else did. Um, and I'll, I'll kind of go over anything that, that looks like, uh, it may have a question about it. So, we'll go ahead and start as we go down with, uh, uniforms. Um, so that's not sports uniforms, that's directly under it, um, that's our staff uniforms. Um, that's gonna include any of your maintenance staff, um, shirts, um, in terms of their, um, uh, their uniforms, their pants allowance, their staff shirts, that's office staff. Uh, one of the things that, um, you may remember from last year is we shifted all of our P P E, which is our protective, um, equipment, into that line item. Um, so, as we also do all of our uniforms, that's also any of your protective glasses, your headphones, um, chaps for, uh, cutting trees, um, anything like that. So, that's why you see a little bit of a, um, a difference there, um, because we do allocate that P P E if we need it. So, replacements, purchasing new ones, things of that sort. Um, so that's why that line item comes across it, has eight thousand going into the nine-month budget. Um, the next one, um, that will be, uh, a little, um, I guess, interesting to look at, will be your repairs and maintenance equipment. Um, I can tell you, this has been a very irregular year for us with equipment repairs. Um, you know, much to the strength of myself and our staff. Um, you know, things that we don't typically see, uh, popped up this year, such as we had to help, um, we made an agreement with Public Works to help, uh, replace some backhoe tires. And we actually had a, a rough mower, um, break. We got it fixed, it came back, we had it a week, and then it broke again. Um, and it was just things as the mowing deck and, uh, we had a sealant pop. Um, so it was just things like that, that we had to repair, um, not really, uh, expected it. So, um, you'll see in that la, la, line item, we are above, um, what we would, but those three items alone are about thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, so that's gonna see one of your biggest increases. So, um, we did ask for an increase in that line item, um, as we have now gotten into three years of Catawba Park and we continue to have equipment. We wanna make sure we're also doing, um, continuing our preventative maintenance and, and just making sure that if there, anything like that pops up, we're able to fix it, um, very quickly. Because, um, for those of you that go out to the park, it is used all the time. Um, so we wanna make sure we have that, as well as maintaining all of our equipment here, uh, in the city as well. So, keep us, uh, going and, and no delays there. Uh, contract grounds maintenance, which is right underneath that as well, um, that number, uh, just shows that our two, uh, mowing agreements, landscaping mowing agreements, um, that ends on July first, so it's a significant decrease based on what you would be seeing if it was projected. Um, but you'll see, that would be your slight increase for one of them, um, but then also stopping on July first. So, that's why there's kind of a big, um, change there, uh, with those ones. Uh, professional insurance, um, just so that you see that, even with it being a nine-month budget, we pay that a one-time fee in October. Um, that's just our, our recreation risk insurance. Um, so all of our recreation sports, um, that's where that comes out of right there. Um, entry fees, um, Councilwoman Miller, you'll enjoy that, it is going down, not by a ton, but it is going down. Um, so we will be chartering, uh, with a different organization. Um, Little League is one that we've been through for, or been with for years. Um, their prices continue to skyrocket, and the red tape that they make us go through in order to just be chartered by Little League, um, has gotten kind of out of hand. Um, and we see it every year, year after year, the prices are going up and nothing is really changing. So, we will be chartering with a different organization. It does lower the costs, um, and it also allows us to have our district tournament with cities in the surrounding area, uh, Fort Mill, um, uh, York, uh, Clover, um, Rock Hill. All of them participate in that organization, so it gives us more of a local feel and it lowers the cost. So, that's what you're gonna see in your entry fees, that's why it's a little bit lower. Um, I T expense, um, let me switch over to that real fast, so that I have it for you. If I can. So I can give you those numbers. Usually I'm good at this, so I apologize this time. Um, so our I T expense, um, that's just gonna cover your Civic Plus Civic Ret, so your registration software for, uh, for sports. Um, one of the things we'll also include is part of the laptop replacement program. Uh, Caroline's laptop, um, is due up for, uh, replacement, as it is one of our oldest ones, uh, in the group. Um, hers is a little bit more expensive than our typical laptops, just because it has more programming for, for editing and, and, uh, design and things of that sort. Um, and the last part that is different, um, that wasn't shown in, um, in this year's, uh, budget, is gonna be your pickleball access gate. Um, so that's gonna be your access control, as well as your registration software. Um, so it's a one-time fee, um, that will control your, your gate access for any of the, uh, individuals that purpose, purchase memberships. It's, they'll also take your payments. Um, so unfortunately, the registration software that we use now for registration ports, uh, registration sports, it, it doesn't, um, configure with, uh, with the access, uh, company. Um, so we have to use an outside company to do that as well. Um, and that increases about twenty-three hundred dollars for the year. Um, but we anticipate, once we're up and running, um, the membership court fees will obviously help with that, offset that cost. Yes, yes, yes. Uh, park maintenance, um, you'll see that it is a, a decrease of that, but with a nine-month budget. Um, what we did is just a re, a reminder with your park maintenance, that includes your general park maintenance, as well as, um, Scott Cook's, uh, turf application plan. So, anyone in the house, see how beautiful the outfield's and all the grass looks around the city? Um, that's part of Scott's application plan. So, uh, we took, uh, your seventy-five percent of that, um, and then there is an increase of about five thousand dollars, um, in that park maintenance. And for, over the past three years, um, Joe Hedgepath, our ground superintendent, has tracked irrigation leaks and irrigation repairs. And over the past three years, we're seeing about an average of five thousand dollars increase than we normally would with irrigation. And it's a combination of just older systems, replacing systems, um, sometimes they get hit with mowing or run over, and things of that sort. Um, so we wanna make sure that we're capturing that in our park maintenance, um, with that irrigation. Um, our irrigation guys do a great job. Uh, Russ and Mark are fantastic. They, they're very quick with getting things fixed, and, and we appreciate their expertise in that area. Um, doggy stations, i- it's a slight decrease, but, you know, just so that I can touch on it, um, if you can imagine, we, uh, we buy dog bags in bulk, so we get a massive pallet that just gets slammed in front of Parks and Rec. And everyone thinks it's hilarious, but we're able to basically cover the entire, uh, budget year with one pallet. So, um, people love their dogs here in T G K. Um, we replace those dog bags constantly. Maybe not Joey's dog, but... Um, so, so we anticipate not having to buy dog bags in this, in this budget cycle, so that's just, um, showing that there. So, that's gonna be any replacements for your dog stations, poles, things of that sort that go on there. Um, and then trail maintenance and, and, uh, Councilman Shirley, you hit on this a little bit earlier about leaning trees on the trail. Um, so, and, um, Charlie mentioned this earlier, um, for whatever reason, uh, we had a, a lot of trees that either were leaning or fell over on trails this year. Um, so that's what you're gonna see with that line item that, that's over right now. We had, um, a lot of trees that had to be come down, or had to come down. And, and as we all know in T G K, not all of them are small trees. Um, so a lot of that was contracted out that we ha, that we had to bring someone in to take down for safety reasons. Um, and with trail maintenance too, um, as, you know, trails continue to age and we have trees right next to trails, we're, we're constantly making sure that we're trying to cut, either cut out roots or fix cracks and things of that sort. So, our land, or our trail maintenance, um, is staying right around that in that nine-month period, but that's the reason why we're over in that line item. Um, so we wanna make sure that we keep the trails safe, they're heavily used. Um, my wife has decided she's now a walker, um, so I get to walk the trails almost every night now. So, it's a good thing for me, um, and she tells me to stop looking for things that are wrong, so... Yeah, yeah, so, but it's nice, especially in the, the high heat and humidity, but, so... But that is all the ones that I wanted to cover. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, if y'all have any questions.
A couple of weeks ago when we met, we talked about, uh, some of the grasscutting equipment. And can you tell me where that is? I, I don't see that.
It's not in there yet.
Okay.
It's still over on the other sheet.
Okay.
And we'll cover that when we finish non-departemental.
It, it's not in there, and I just wanted, when we got to, I was gonna cover it too, but based on staff's feedback, I know we had talked about the difference between sit-down and, and stand-up mowers. Um, so, new to me, but they prefer the stand-up ones when they're on inclines. Um, because it's easier to, to get off if things go, yeah, go wrong, so...
Right, they can manage that angle better.
Exactly, yeah. Going in the water. So, so when, when that, when, when, uh, they were requesting it, that's the reason why they asked for two, just to make sure that they can handle that incline, so...
Great.
New to me, and I figured I'd share that.
Yeah, good.
Um, so if my, if my formula's right, you're about five percent down, just that year over, year over.
In expenses?
Yeah, on your expenses, so congratulations for that. Um, I do have some questions, more on the revenue, um, side for recreation. With the, with the, um, the registration fees, the change that we've had, there's that two-hundred-thousand-dollar difference that's noted on the, on here. How many registrations do we need to have in order to ma, is it the same number of registrations? Or are we, are we gonna have to increase the number of registrations to get to that two-hundred-thousand-dollar difference?
So, Bob, do you wanna go to the breakdown, or I can...
I haven't done that analysis at all.
Okay, okay. So, we, we don't necessarily look at the number that we need to get to. Um, so when we were looking at the registration, like, uh, the revenue in terms of, of how to make that up, um, we were taking that, and then we wanted to give a good estimate as to what it would be with those participants coming in. So, one of the parts about this revenue, which is gonna be, I guess, not new to us, but with this being the first time we're doing it, we're trying to estimate it as much as we possibly can. So, we wanted to take the number historically that we typically have, and then in, include that seventy, seventy-dollar, uh, fee as well.
Okay.
Um, so there's not a specific number, um, outside of what we estimated in terms of our traditional numbers, and then basing it on the average fee.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that answered the question, but...
I think so. Well, if, if we're charging a specific amount per participant, then that should get us to that num, to that two-hundred-thousand, right, per, per participant. So, I guess I was curious, is, if that total number of participants is the same as what you would normally see in a given year?
So, yeah, so traditionally, we, we looked at our numbers, um, so this specific one, um, with the registration numbers being a little bit off, um, you're catching pretty much the fall season, um, excuse me, the spring season in registration, and then slightly some of the, uh, of the, of the fall. So, we're taking the numbers that we, uh, historically see during that time, and that's the number we're working off with the average price, and then the, the percentage with the additional fee. I, I'm hoping I'm explaining that right.
I think so, yeah, I think, I think...
Well, t, sorry. I, I was just gonna say to chime in, Parks and Recreation revenue was definitely one of the most challenging ones of doing the, uh, this updated budget, change in the fiscal year, because essentially, in this budget year, as Dustin mentioned, you're, you're capturing the fall registrations, or, or all the spring registration, and you're only capturing the resident registration for the month of June. We opened up non-resident in July, so you're not actually capturing any of that additional seventy-dollar fee.
Right.
Within that other season. And then, you just can't track what attrition rate is gonna look like with that increased fee and still, until we have a couple of years of data to really see what the new norm's gonna be.
Well, we can look at Mason's Bend, you know, in, in Waterston and those areas.
Signing up for Mason's Bend.
I, I hope they don't leave, so I'm, I'm hoping to be here with us.
And, and like I said, we looked at the number traditionally and tried to give an estimate. Um, like, to give you an example, um, in last fall, prior to this, uh, we had about a thousand eighty kids registered. So, with a week prior to registration, we're right around that, like, seven-hundred-and-seventy range, just specifically the sports that we oversee, not including soccer. So, that's kind of where our difference is right now. Now, that might be an anomaly, because school has changed a little bit and no one's thinking about getting registered, so we may see a massive increase. But as Joey mentioned, this, this year is gonna be a little bit different, um, in terms of registrations. And as we progress, we would be able to kind of lock in that number, um, a little bit more precise.
Okay. Um, the last question that I have is on the revenue for sponsorships, park rentals, and the concession revenue. The, what's been budgeted for those has been pretty consistent year over year for, 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 I think, at least three to, three to five years. Is there any, any, um, opportunity to look at those numbers and come up with a way of increasing that, a system, a, a goal, a, you know, especially for, for sponsorships, 'cause that's a big number. Um, to say, you know, we're, we're going to increase, we want to increase our sponsorship by five percent, three percent, whatever that is, right? So, that there's, there's kind of a, a, a very focused effort in increasing the visibility to, I'm assuming that that's Catawba Park?
In terms of sponsorship, so it, it covers actually...
The whole thing, yeah.
Recreation and events.
But that's the big draw, I think, for people too, right? Is that they're sponsoring that, um, that venue. Um, so I'm, I'm just curious.
Technically, they're not sponsoring that venue at all. Like, they're, they're sponsoring our teams, and then they're getting the community events sponsorship. None of it is applied to, like, I've sponsored this part of the park or anything at the park.
Okay. I guess when I...
We would love to get those, but...
Yeah, and, and I, I think the way that I tie it is, as a business owner, when I had the opportunity to, to sponsor, that was a big reason why I, I jumped in to do it, because it, I had the opportunity to have my, my brand at Catawba Park. And that's, I think that that's why I'm, I'm looking at it that way. And I think, uh, you know, other businesses, especially a small business, would see that as this, you know, big opportunity of visibility. Um, so I'm just curious if there's, if there's a way to just focus on that a little bit, to give it a, give it a very specific goal of, of increasing over year over year type of thing.
And absolutely, I mean, we're, we're always looking at ways to try and find more sponsors. Um, I know this has been a, I could not say a hot topic, but a lot of conversations throughout, whether it's, um, myself, Caroline, uh, Walker Johnson, who does the backend work of things. Sponsorships are, are, uh, kind of finicky in terms of, uh, there's numerous reasons why people do it. There's some people that say, you know, I'm gonna do this every single year for the next twenty-five years, you can count on my checks. Sometimes they're like, you know, my kid is seven, and I'm gonna do it all the way until they're fourteen, and then I'm done. So, we, we gain and lose sponsorships just kind of depending on the level. Um, obviously, we would love to have all four of our ten thousand sponsors every single year and, and write in those ones. And I think that's a, a large part of, uh, of what we tried to preach, is I think our sponsorships are not only, um, very affordable, but they give you a lot of exposure for not only your recreation sports, but events. Um, so, to your point, um, it, it's not something lost on us, that it's important to grow, and, and we continue to look at ways to do it. And, you know, outside of going business-to-business, which is funny, 'cause Joey and I talked about, he made me do that when I was an intern, go business, business-to-business and, and try and get sponsorships, I think I got one. Um, so, didn't go, it didn't go very well. Yeah, so, um, we're, we're doing everything we can to try and grow it. Um, as much as I would like to say we'll set a five, ten percent goal, we're, we're gonna try and do, get as many as we can every single year, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, Tom. Um, this may be a conversation for offline, but I thought I remember a couple of years ago, there was a very large corporation in the area that someone lives in T G K that had offered to do some sponsorship at Catawba Park just before it opened. Do you remember that? I think it might have even been, like, the energy company. All right, let's talk about that offline, because I thought I remember someone that was in charge of that, that really wanted to contribute that way, and we haven't, we haven't revisited that. Uh, yeah, let's, let's...
Tom Highsley Catawba Park sounds pretty good.
Let's brainstorm that a little bit. I thi, I think we could revisit that. I think, I think we could revisit that.
Any other questions, comments?
Still want to do the restrooms of the Ashley Raven building.
On Parks and Rec? Anything else for Dustin? Dustin, why don't you just stay there because after we finish non-departmental, we'll go into your other things. So you'll just hang out with us for just a minute. Non-departmental, so we'll go through those. Yeah, legal fees, we're projecting right at it and I'll be honest, that number may be high. Yeah, as, as councilors where Chaplain has had some, I'll call it one offs, a, a number of those one offs this year. You know, so I think we're in good shape there from legal fees. As you can see, all of our bond payments are due in the first nine months. So you've got 100% of those in there. Yeah, our employee program, which is our employee assistance program that we, we, it's a great tool and a number of our employees are able to use it, whether it's to get, you know, counseling or, or legal assistance or things like that from a personal standpoint. So we've got a great program there. Our safety program that, that includes, our safety boots and things like that, but it also includes our required quarterly safety luncheons that we do throughout the year. Yeah, our computer maintenance, that's our software annual maintenance on things that are more citywide and not just specific to a single, like our Microsoft license and, and things like that that we use. Yeah, let's see, RFATs, that's a number that comes from them and it's based on population is how they generate that, that number for us. Your property insurance, yeah, I mean, there's a slight uptick there, but not, not much. And then your wildlife management. Now, that's one I want to focus on there. That includes, I'm going to turn it over to Joey, but it does, right now, it, it, all I was going to say is it includes sterilization and culling, but Joey, I'm going to let you get into the details on that.
Thank you. So approximately 200,000 of it is in sterilization. And as Dr. Dean Nicola kind of explained to us when we began this process, that, you know, the, the more you go into it, you're going to get diminishing returns, which the cost per deer is going to go up. So through that proposal of 200,000 would be a range of 125 to 175 deer. So you're not going to be guaranteed 175. He could go into the field and, you know, it'd be a struggle to find that. The other part of that would encompass the culling the deer at $420 per deer and then additional cost of 130 to process. We're very fortunate that the majority of the processing fees were covered by the Kataba Indian Nation. Obviously, we hope there's an opportunity there, but we don't want to assume that. So this is our best guesstimate at sterilization of 125 to 175 deer and then culling 160 deer. I will say that, you know, we're, we're conducting the, the surveys right now. The first evening presented some really positive numbers. We're at 57 deer seen with 39 of those being tagged. In comparison, the first night last year, we were at 114. So positive regression there. The other thing that we're tracking that is very positive as well is deer pickup. This first quarter before anything took place, we're at 70, 78, which was a staggering number, the highest we've ever been. The subsequent quarters were eight and six. Keep in mind, we had had about a two-year trend where everything was 35 and above. We, we were over 200 last year. So if we continue this trend, we, we might be pushing close to less than 100, which gets us back to our more historical numbers.
You're talking about recovered carcasses, right?
Correct. That, you know, we've either found on the roadways or, you know, someone's called us and said, hey, we've got a deer, do you mind picking up? So obviously, let's see how tonight goes, but through the numbers we're tracking, there's been some positive regression for us. So hopefully, all the work we've put in this past year is yielding positive results.
So council, as you can see, your bottom, bottom line revenues over expenditures puts us at 2.2 million, a little over 2.2, 2 million to the good. Obviously, we're, we're going to need a sum of money to get from July to, to December for tax money to start coming in and things like that, you know, as we end the upcoming fiscal year and then transition into the new one starting July 1. So that's, that's where we're at right now before we start talking about any, any personnel. The, the request from Chief Crosby related to this, this market-driven adjustment for PD. And we've also got some projects and things like that. While I've got Dustin at the table, all three of those do relate to Parks and Recreation. But before we dive into that part and shift over to the Personnel and Capital Request tab, any questions, comments on the non-departmental side of things?
I'm not in favor of sterilization again.
I am not either.
I, I would agree with.
I think Dean Nicola has priced himself out of a job.
Well, it, it helped and the culling helped and it's just, it's too expensive. I mean. It's extremely expensive. I think it was very effective. I think the long-term effects of it will be great. When we looked at the spreadsheet that you provide, provided for us, Joey. What I recall is a lot of us focused on first year of sterilization and culling and then culling after that for four years. And they were very productive numbers using that strategy.
It was.
And, and if we cull only, by my math, we're at 44 grand, including, just for the 80, right? Just for the 80. If we get a second permit, that's probably more than double.
I think last year's activities yielded amazing results. Not, I didn't like the fact that they culled and I, I'll stick on the record with that because I still don't want culling. I'd rather stick with the sterilization if that's what we do and I know where you guys are at and I respect that. But since November, no, December, I've only seen deer in my backyard maybe three or four times, whereas I used to see them every single night in my backyard. So it's yielded tons of results.
I think we gained a lot of ground.
They're all just coming in my backyard.
They're, they're in the mayor's backyard.
99 through, you know, 135, 155, you know?
I, I still have a lot in my yard, but I don't see them while I'm driving through TK like I did before. So, so I think we've, we've had an effect.
I'm certainly for reducing that budget, but I'd like to see those counts. And we should be able to see the counts before we have to vote on this, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd say leave it the way it is right now, for now.
Yeah.
Until we have more data. Okay with that, Tom? I mean, I want to see it reduced. Yeah, I mean, me personally, I, I'm. But I don't know how to reduce it yet. I'm a no on culling, I mean, on sterilization again. I'm, I'm with you.
I'm not disagreeing. I just want to see the numbers so that we, so that it, it actually shows that we can take our foot off that accelerator and continue to have, you know, manageable results going forward. Reducing it by the culling side because the sterilization was so much more expensive.
Right.
But before making a decision, I want to see that those numbers are, it's, it's enough of a percentage difference that the 80 deer or the 160 deer culled will continue to keep those numbers down that we've achieved, right? I don't want to reverse it.
If night two's as positive as night one, I would have concerns about both contractors being able to successfully sterilize that number and cull up to 160. I think.
Me personally, I just want to take them out of the food chain.
Yeah, I just, I, I just, I mean.
Well, put them in the food chain. Take them out of eating all of the stuff around here chain.
To Karma's point though, I think the sterilizing again is not going to reduce anything.
Right. I mean, the.
No, long-term maybe. Oh, yeah, sure. But short-term.
But it doesn't have an impact on our resources.
We have 200 deer that are sterilized, right? So that, that's 200 deer that are our base population. Well.
Yeah.
We've lost a few since then.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that the decision that we make with the numbers that we're looking at make the best sense because I think that will also help us set the budget, whether that's, you know, we, we only need 80 in order to maintain this, you know? It, it'll be really good data to, to use.
Yeah, I can't wait to get the results.
I guess what I'm asking though is, is if nobody's in favor of culling, I mean, sterilization. We'll have it, isn't it? It's take it out for now, see how the numbers look. We can always add it if it comes back and it's, oh my gosh, they went up, you know? Well, I would, I, I'm not against that, Tom. I think that's probably a good strategy and I think it's a prudent strategy for the budget. And, but I would recommend leaving enough in the budget that would slightly exceed the value of doing permits. Oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Well, that would be your 90,000.
Yeah.
That would be the.
That's your 90,000 there.
And as we discussed, we don't know what a second round would look like. There may be.
It could be more than the first.
Yeah.
Generally, yes, right.
Returns you might.
I'd say leave 100 in there.
And not factor in.
Right.
We hope there is some savings there with, if Kataba Indian Nation's a willing participant in the processing fees that's not accounted for in that, so.
Joey, I know that, that federally they're, they have the first right of refusal, but if we had another entity that.
Who does?
The Kataba Indian Nation.
No, they don't.
No, they don't. The, the permit requires us to give it to a, and I forget the word, it's a very big, long, fancy word.
It's a charitable.
But it's basically, it has to be towards a charitable type thing. That's the only requirement.
That could be any.
Sorry, I was mistaken.
The, the Kataba Indian Nation was, has been a great partner.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and it, it's keeping the meat local, you know, within the county and things like that. I think it's fantastic.
It's a very cultural.
Yes.
Sounds like you might have another idea for it.
I'm, I'm just, you know, saying that we could, we could put it out for bid.
I don't think so.
Who's going to, who's going to, who's going to.
I don't think we can sell it.
Who's going to cover the cost?
Hickory Hills offered to do it because they have an agreement with the state that was signed by Governor McMaster to put food in needy schoolchildren's backpacks. So if you'd like, I'd be glad to call him again unless someone else wants to.
If they're not willing to come to the table and, and pay for them.
And, and we're not saying that they're not.
Yeah, we have.
We're just budgeting just in case.
Yeah.
Because it has to be processed.
Yeah, it does. But I'm just saying if they don't want to pay for the process, then let's, let's pursue an alternative means of getting rid of them.
We absolutely can.
Okay. I'm glad you brought it up because that, that is an option for us.
So, so what is the number that council wants to see in there? Is it leave it until 290 until we get the stuff? Is it 100 grand?
I'm good with 100.
Yeah, leave 100 in there. Give it a little bit of room to breathe.
That's, that's what I'm comfortable with.
The positive is we won't have a spotlight survey in this budget because it'll be after July 1 when we do another count.
Uh, next year?
Correct. So it won't, that, you won't have a spotlight survey in next year's budget.
Okay.
Because it will, will hold off until, ideally, we'd do it in August, but given the budget time, it made sense to go ahead and tackle it right now before y'all make a decision on next year.
And, and this statement I'm about to make is not a micromanagement statement, it's just something that I thought I observed Dr. Ruth say, that the count was best in August or September because the buck's antlers are more developed and they're more visible by then. Are, are we okay doing it this time of year?
Absolutely. So Tim scheduled it as early as it could be.
Okay.
Ideally, it would be in August because you can differentiate better.
Yeah.
Male and female, as, as Charles Ruth stated. But for the sake of this budget conversation, I felt like it was pertinent.
That makes sense.
The, the concern I have obviously going for next year is we won't have that count.
Right.
Before making a decision. That's the challenge of the budget year.
Yeah.
Yeah, but with the, the amount of work we put in the past couple of years, we'll at least have some kind of a, an idea based on the.
We've got a few years of trends.
Yeah, based on the data that we've got.
Yeah, I mean, this, this year will be very.
At least we're not shooting in the dark like we were.
Will be very important for subsequent years, for sure.
See what I did there?
I saw what you did there.
All right. So, uh, let's switch over to the Personnel Capital Request. And since I still got Dustin here, because we haven't talked about these yet, we have talked about the other items, but we'll get more into detail. So Dustin, if you want to talk about these three, I'll, I'll call them three projects, even though I know one of them is multiple projects, but.
Can I ask one question I wanted to ask before we left that section?
Sure.
As far as the Kataba Park bond, Charlie, I looked at the, remember the plan sheet we did with, with the debt and all that?
Mm-hmm.
And the, on that, it showed the Kataba Park bond this year being in like $700,000 range, because it went significantly from 500 to 600, but it keeps showing 591.
Really?
That's, that's what the amortization schedule is on it. But there's, Bob, it's missing, there's two payments that get made, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you've got a principal and an interest, so it's missing one of those because it's a shorter nine-month year. But Bob, we're still showing it at 12 months.
Yeah, that's why I was confused.
If you'll look at that AM schedule.
We can go ahead, I just, I, I wanted to make sure it wasn't.
Dustin, why don't you go ahead? Let's talk about year three projects while Bob's looking this up.
No problem. And, and I'll start with the first one. So I passed out to y'all our Parks and Recreation Park Action Plan. This is something that y'all were very gracious to brought, to allocate funds for this, for this budget, for us to tackle a lot of projects. I think they've done a very fantastic job. I'd like to point out Pit Karen Park, I think, looks like a completely different park based on what they were able to do. So thank you for that. This is just another phase of the Park Action Plan. As you can see, going through the, the different parks, it covers about seven different parks throughout the entire city of TK. Councilman Shirley said, yeah, it looks a little light, you want to get more money? But what, oh, I may, I may have added that last part, sorry about that. But, but we, what we wanted to do in the nine-month budget, we wanted to make sure that our staff, any of this stuff that we were going to do, as you can see, it's very staff-heavy. We wanted to make sure we were going to be able to accomplish the projects that we were putting in front of y'all. So while the number, you know, may look a little light, we want to make sure that, that we're going to touch as many parks as we possibly can and really make an impact with the money that we're asking for. So one of the ones that is very important, definitely, I won't go through it one by one, but the railroad ties at, at Windjammer Park, for those of you that don't know, it's the driveway that goes up to the building. It's currently held together by railroad ties and lumber and it's starting to lean. So we want to make, so if you, no, yeah, if you're going to the pavilion on the left-hand side. So we want to make sure we take care of that structurally. So that's one of our biggest projects, which is why we have a contractor doing it. But as I said, a lot of it is going to be enhancing these parks, whether it's through landscaping or just fixing things, such as our, our disc golf course, making sure that it stands out, gets a little bit of TLC and updates some of those tee boxes. It gets used very heavily. So we want to make sure to just continue to make our existing facilities look nice. So that's our Park Action Plan as we go through and the costs associated with it. So we want to continue this phase by phase as we put it into the Park Master Plan and, and through y'all, continuing to support this. So that's what the Park Action Plan consists of. Do y'all have any questions about it before I move on or do you want to ask questions as we get through all three?
Didn't we do a significant amount of riprap at Windjammer this year?
Phase one, and I'm going to touch on that one in just a second.
Okay.
The Kataba Park, the ad irrigation to the playground grass area?
Yes.
That doesn't have irrigation currently? That doesn't have irrigation currently?
That currently does not have irrigation.
And I don't see a difference between that grass and anything else that has irrigation, I assume. Is there, is there an issue going on over there?
Scott Cook may faint right now.
Oh, really?
So, if you look at the event lawn on the left-hand side, that is, you know, very nice, well-filled in. That is irrigated. On the, where the playground is at, where the trees are, it's very spotty, and it's pretty much whatever grows there. That area is not irrigated. That's strictly on rainfall. So, you're going to see a lot of patches of grass, especially, you know, Catawba Fest last year, when it rained, there was a lot of mud and spots where it just, there was nothing there. So, we want to make sure that fills in. So, you know, we were able to make sure that both areas look like it should at the park.
Gotcha. I just never noticed it.
All right. So, we'll, we'll jump over to the riprap at Windjammer, like the mayor mentioned. So, as Charlie said, this request would be phase two. So, the way that the permits work with Duke, you can basically do up to five hundred linear feet of a commercial spot. So, we did five hundred linear feet in the first phase. I wanted to show this picture because you can see how drastically different the riprap versus what it looked like before. So, that's your money at work. I liked, when, when, when he, I got a picture and I saw how strikingly different it was, I wanted to show y'all, this is what y'all are doing to Windjammer Park because it is very important. So.
It's not just aesthetics, right?
It's not just aesthetics. It protects the point and its erosion control, exactly. So, this would be phase two. So, right now, phase one is essentially around the point up until the dock. Phase two would be the dock all the way down to the entrance of the park. So, the right side, if you're coming into the park, driving in, along that right side, that would be your phase two, which is, again, that's what that request is for. So. And that will be the end of it. You won't have me asking any more money for Windjammer riprap.
Phase three.
Yeah, there's no phase three.
If I remember that area correctly, a significant portion of that, on the right side as you're driving in, the beach.
Yeah, so it won't be any of the beach area.
I'm sure it wouldn't, but wouldn't that be, because of that, wouldn't that be a lot less than the first thing?
So, if you look at the map, so, I'll show you this one. So, the map, it's basically, if you're looking at that one there, the first part is the point, and then that orange down to the yellow is about the same as that, that point there. So, it was mapped out when we did it. It includes, yeah, it includes any of the rock. So, it doesn't, it doesn't cover the beach.
Okay. Is that, is there a riprap? Closer to the road, the riprap beach area?
There shouldn't be any along the beach. Yeah. Unless at the, if there's existing riprap, they'll cover it. But with it being a beach, they shouldn't cover the beach.
That'd be a surefire way to cut down on the parking problems. Cover the whole beach with riprap. That'd be a surefire way to get rid of that problem.
The same linear feet, I figured the cost would be less because there's a lot of beach.
It's slightly, yeah. So, and the differences of the two is the tonnage of rock that they have to use. Some of them is a little bit longer, or excuse me, higher width, I guess. I'm not a technical guy, I guess. But length-wise, as well as the height, yeah.
Or are you going to talk about Winward?
Yep, that was next. Okay. So, the Winward median. So, for those of you that recall, this is actually a part two of something that was budgeted for this current budget, was to remove the trees along the very front first median, as well as the second median. So, this request here is going to be essentially phase two of that project. So, taking out all of those trees along, it's about seven hundred and fifty-five feet in that first median from TDK Drive to Mariana, and then the following median as well. So, what we discussed as staff is we don't want to clearcut that and leave it completely empty. One, aesthetically, not great. And two, we don't want cars parking in the median and that continuing to be a PD issue. So, our goal with this request is to go ahead and take care of the trees at the end of this budget year. And hopefully, with y'all's approval, we have the allocated funds to then put back trees, shrubbery, and make that area look nice as part of this budget. So, to kind of give you an idea, the, and, and we're no, we're no artists over here, but this is essentially what the meat, the large median would be. Just try to imagine this as you're going down TDK Drive. It's very similar with your trees in the middle. Your end caps will have your flowers, bushes, and then you'll have an assortment of trees throughout that entire median. So, it will give it a little bit more of TDK Drive aesthetic. And Joe has put together the trees, the shrubs, and things of that sort that he would like to put in there. And then your next cap, which will be the very next median, they'll do that the same as well. So, they'll do your trees, and you'll do your end caps as well.
Dustin, I thought, I thought we were talking about putting in lighting and parking and all of that good stuff down that median to take the trees out. Working towards that as a goal.
About parking, too.
That will be massively expensive.
Well, I thought we were working that in phases, you know, to take the trees out, and then we put some lighting in and light that place up where kids are safer when they're running across the street at night.
So, we.
I mean, instead of putting in shrubs and trees back again, I mean, we're taking out trees. Why are we going to put more trees in there?
Well, you're talking about less evasive trees with the roots and things like that.
I'm talking about any trees, period. Why are we going to waste our money to put trees in the middle of that median if we're going to take trees out of the median?
I think your people living along Winward would be very upset.
I can't imagine that being a parking lot.
It would, it would turn into a parking lot.
It already is a parking lot. If you ever go down there and coach baseball or play baseball.
Oh, it's a mess of a parking lot.
It's a parking lot already. It's just a parking lot in pine needles. And we've got no parking signs on one side of the street so the kids don't get hit running through the cars on the other side of the street. So, you know, to me, maybe I missed the boat. I'm sorry. But I thought we were going to put some lighting in and some asphalt in and not put trees and shrubs in.
I don't remember any of this.
I don't, I don't remember this, and I didn't realize we were going to take out trees down there.
Yeah, I actually didn't even realize that it was all the trees. I thought it were putting back.
That would have been in Public Works' budget, so I'm just talking about this project.
Don't come at me.
But, so I can't speak too, too much on that, but from my understanding, this was what was put in for them to remove that, to help with that road repair, because a lot of those trees are getting into the road, and when we repaired them.
That's what I remember. Yeah.
Protect the asset.
Right. Because we had just resurfaced, so there was, there was a certain amount of trees that were going to be taken down. I didn't, I didn't hear, or I didn't hear that all of it was being cut off and then replanted.
There, there are some, I believe as part of the plan, there are some trees that they've identified that won't cause the issues, that will still remain, but in order to not make the entire area look bare, it was recommended to strategically.
If I could just make a suggestion before you go in there to start cutting down all these trees and have a picture of what the end result's going to be so that people don't get really upset over the fact that you're cutting down an entire median.
And that's why, that was, that's why we wanted to discuss this now, to ensure that y'all understand that when that eventually happens, we have a plan to put that back in place almost, I don't want to say immediately, but we want to time it up to when those trees go out. We can put this, this back in very, very quickly afterwards.
And is, is it going to be set up so that we don't have the issue that Mayor Gray is talking about, where people will find a way to park in that middle section? I know in some cases, you guys have put some stone and landscaped close enough to the edge so that it doesn't become an available parking space.
So, that was actually a discussion I had with Joe Hedgepath today. We were kind of throwing out a couple of ideas. And, you know, the joke is, is he has a boulder farm somewhere in TDK that we don't know where it's at. So, so that we can strategically put boulders in places, but we've also, he was doing some research in terms of, like, I guess you want to call it almost rope, where you have two posts and there's something that blocks it in between. So, it's decorative, so it looks like it's part of the landscaping, while also not allowing cars to park there. So, there are, you know, if you know him, he's very, very passionate about this, and he really wants the landscaping to look as beautiful as it is. So, he's coming, trying to come up with as many ideas as he can to limit the people parking there. But, I mean, I'm going to steal something from Joey that he told me like ten years ago. People parking is like water. They're going to find the path of least resistance. So, you're going to find some people that are going to do it, and, and, but we're going to try as much as we can to limit it.
So, where are we going to put all the folks that park down there for practice and ballgames and all that? Where are we going to put them?
So, in terms of parking at the park, so we do have ballgames, but we try to limit because, especially with, with recreation sports, we have an understanding of what can fit there. So, we do as much as we can to limit how much we put there, whether it's practices, games at one time, so that it's not a complete madhouse. Now, sometimes it's, it's unavoidable, but I know my staff does as much as they can to avoid overcrowding that parking lot.
But we've still got folks parking in the street during the game seasons, right?
People.
You have very few games there now.
Yeah.
Very, very few. It's not like it was three, four, or five years ago. I mean, I would dare say ninety-nine percent of your games are at Catawba Park.
The challenge now.
In concerts, and that's why we have the buses and things of that sort, so we can try to alleviate that. And we typically keep that parking lot set aside for handicap accessible and things of that sort.
Fair enough. That's, that's not on here. Where am I?
Uh, that's the, it's, it's on the, the actual project.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. It's not included on that one.
And thank you for having it as a plan.
Absolutely.
I really would like to see that across the board, just knowing what is coming in two years and five years so that it's easy for us to go through and know what, how to budget for that.
And part of the Park Action Plan, and I think you and I discussed it before, is, you know, we have all those ideas that we tried to put together, and, and we've realized that sometimes it's a little fluid. So, we tried to capture everything, but there's sometimes things pop up, and we want to make sure that we do it.
And that's understanding, right?
So, we try to catch as much as we can.
No one expects it to be in writing, and then that's the, that's it. That you just, you said you needed a truck. You're going to buy a truck whether you need it or not. But it helps, it helps with understanding what the budget is, what the budget asks are today, when you, when you've seen it as a plan.
Absolutely.
So, the riprap was a two-phase plan, and I think that was very strategic how we handled that. The forty that's being asked be allocated for the Winward medium, is that, is that complete, or is that phase one?
That would be complete for the large median and the second median. So, if there was plans to remove any additional trees or to clear any of those medians, then we would come back. But from my understanding, I believe it's only the first two medians.
Is there any interest in any future budgets that anything going further down Winward to the circle or anything would, would need to be addressed that we know of? To Carmen's comment.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I can't answer that.
Okay, fair enough.
That hasn't been a discussion that's come up. So, I don't want to say yes or no.
No needed plan as of now.
But if we can all absolutely look into it and see if there's something that's coming up and plan accordingly, so.
Well, the big turnaround, the roundabout looks good.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's because all the trees got taken out by that big windstorm, right? I think it was a tornado, actually.
Counsel, if we can, real quick, I want to circle back. Bob's got the answer to, Tom, your question that you just asked regarding the bond payments.
The Catawba Park remained stable throughout the term, but five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. The difference that you saw is the police station goes up. It's the police station. We refunded that.
Yep. It got refunded with the Catawba Park bond because it dropped the interest rate from what the original PD bond was.
Oh, she rolled it into.
Correct.
Exactly. So, you saw a total amount, which was the police in Catawba, and we split them out.
Okay.
The police goes up to two thousand twenty-eight, but Catawba stays stable.
Okay. Yeah, the police, it gets added to Catawba, definitely? Yeah. It's already added.
It's added already.
So, we, we split it in the budget, but it's part of one bond. When we did the bond for Catawba Park, we also refi, refunded and refinanced on the police bond because we were able to get a much lower interest rate.
We got a two-point-five-four interest rate.
All right, no worries. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't.
Yep, yep. We got it all.
All right. So, the next thing you've got is on the personnel side of things. So, there is.
Thank you, counsel. I appreciate you all listening.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
I think this was brought up, I think Mayor Gray may have brought it up when we were talking admin. So, there is a request for a HR specialist to be added to admin. The, if you're on that tab, you can see the nine-month effect or impact to the budget would be fifty-nine thousand, three ninety-two. We would greatly, greatly appreciate that. I know Ms. Dorr would greatly appreciate that. You know, just the, the amount of time that she has to spend on processing both new employees coming in, employees going out, and things like that, it really hampers her and her time on being able to do other much-needed HR functions. Just to put it briefly, and, and trying to be cognizant of the hour that we're in now, for the most part, they're, they're going to be focused on, on benefits and assisting Dorr with other things, also serving as Dorr's backup when it comes to payroll and things of that nature. It is absolutely a needed position. If you need more information on that, I can invite Ms. Dorr up to the table. But what is counsel's thoughts on that position?
I would like to hear from Dorr.
Okay. Come on, Ms. Dorr.
We're up to how many folks? A hundred fifty?
Uh, no, fully, fully staffed, you're at about one thirty-three, one thirty-five, with all positions full.
Okay. Hello, Dorr.
How are you?
Good. Welcome.
Actually, City Manager Charlie Fundler said exactly that I was going to say. This person will be responsible for benefits, which I'm hoping to allow me to be more involved in the hiring process, recruiting, and retention. I would just like to at least be involved because currently, I'm not involved in the hiring processes. And we all know there's a lot of legal things when it comes to human resources, and I do not want to have to defend a claim. So, I would like to be present, so if and when, because things have happened that happens, that I would at least have knowledge upfront as to what went on in the hiring process.
Good.
And they also can be my backup for payroll when I'm, and when I'm on vacation, I have no coverage. When I'm out sick, thank God I don't be sick, but I have no one to cover me.
Make sure you do it not on a payroll week, right?
I, so that would help me. I also do a lot of training. I'm a certified professional human resource through SHRM, so I have to certify every year. So, a lot of training goes on, so I'm out of the office training, too. But there's a lot of duties to be done. Now, I did not bring my job description, but if you guys would like it, I would definitely email it to you. But I do have a job description for the new hire that I can provide to you. And I also did some, just a little spreadsheet here, just to show you.
Dorr, as you're doing that, the, the average number of HR employees per number of FTEs is one per every, how many?
One hundred.
One per every one?
Did you see?
Hundred.
Oh, every fifty.
So, it's one per every fifty. Okay.
You'll say comparison with what Dorr's passing out.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom. Ms. Dorr's done a tremendous job for the city for, I'm not going to date her, so I'm not going to say how many years, but for a long, long time. She's, she works hard at HR, as I'm sure y'all can attest to. HR is a critical function with any organization, whether it's public or private. I would greatly appreciate counsel's consideration on this one.
I recommend it, too. I see it daily with her. Her responsibilities have increased tremendously.
I appreciate you coming up and, and sharing what you're doing. And yes, we definitely see a need for what you're doing, having one person do that. You need to have more people in your department. And I know that we didn't approve it last year, and I appreciate you bringing it this year because definitely support it. Or I do. I can't speak for all of counsel, honestly.
I do as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I have my vote.
It's important to have a, at some point, I'm thinking you're going to want to retire.
Succession planning, yes.
You know, so.
Not anytime soon, man. Not anytime soon.
I know, but so forty years. We're not talking about that, but. But, but you would, you'd be able, you would have somebody in place as well that could potentially move up, right? Yeah, I'm good.
And I'm also getting a lot of employee situations going on. And so, when that comes to me, I like to try to take care of it immediately. But by not having the time, it's like I had one last Thursday, where I couldn't get to it until this week. And I don't want my employees to feel that I'm not there for them. So, I want to take care of the situation, get them a answer, and let them know, have time to investigate it. So, I want to be readily available for them because if I can't support them, then they're not going to be able to take care of all of our great citizens that we have here in the city of TDK. So, I want to be the best human resource manager for my amazing employees.
Any other questions for Dorr?
No. Having an HR background, I totally understand the soft skills and the technical skills that it requires and the fact that you do not just the HR, but also the payroll and the benefits. A lot of companies have those divided out into different departments. So, I, I can truly, and I've tried to do payroll before, and I don't think they asked me back. So, I do understand, you know, the, the time that it takes for, for those soft skills and the time that it takes for someone to also be able to do the technical side.
And the accuracy and efficiency. You know, I want to have time to review what I do. Because the one thing I don't want to do, I don't want to miss enrolling any person until they help.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would definitely support that, too. I think that's, I think you've asked for it in the past, and we haven't addressed that. I certainly can see the need, and you need to be supported. So, thanks for asking.
All right. Thanks for your support, counsel. Thank you.
Chief Crosby, if you want to come up and discuss your, chief, still here?
He's here.
He's here.
Hi. I hadn't seen him in a minute. I'm not sure if he's back there or not.
Chief Hasty had to nudge him, though.
Chief Crosby's gonna talk about the need for the additional dispatcher. So chief, take it away.
So currently, uh, like I said before, part of our overtime is the coverage that is needed. So when we currently have one dispatcher out, we're then having to backfill and have someone work overtime to cover that person, whether they use vacation, whether they're sick, it's training, or whatever the case may be. So that's why we're asking for that other body and dispatcher.
So this isn't to replace the one that's gone?
No, sir.
This is an additional one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, fair enough. I'm gonna tell my colleagues.
We currently have the bare minimum.
Right.
With dispatch. As chief said, somebody's out sick, somebody's on vacation.
Yeah.
Or if somebody departs us for some reason, it, it leaves a, it leaves a big hole.
I think it's a conservative ask, and to my colleagues, I would say I'd recommend we honor that.
I completely support it. I think we're good.
Yeah.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
And Chief Hasty, um, if you'll make your way to the table. So Chief Hasty is asking to add, um, three additional firefighters. Ms. Miller, sticking with your theme as far as what's to come, chief's prepared to talk about that. So Chief Hasty, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Sure. Hey, thank you guys for having me back. I appreciate your time and everything that you do for us and, and your support. So I am coming back to you again this year and asking for the three firefighters. You guys know our, our city's changing quickly, right? We have some unique things that happen here. A lot of you live in the peninsula, right? It creates challenges, a little bit of challenge for us. Our infrastructure's changing, our infrastructure's aging, right? A lot of our community, especially in the peninsula, is tight, difficult. We've got some six-hundred-foot stretches before we can even get to the house. Very, very, very manpower-intensive just to get down there. You know, we, we can't get the truck down the driveway in many cases, and that's because of the, the terrain, right? Terrain pays a, uh, plays a huge role with our staff as they're trying to get down and attack the fire, right? Creates challenges for us in access. You know, we've got response into the peninsula. You guys know it slows as we try and, especially if we get back into the back end of the peninsula, just making our way through the streets, right? So fire grows, it doubles in size every minute. And it's, our building construction's changed. You guys know we've gone from traditional Tegucay to, to new-style construction, which is more dangerous for us as firefighters. It's more dangerous to our citizens. So we wanna make sure that we can get there quickly and try and address those problems. But we need to have adequate staffing in order to do that. We've got waterfront hazards, talking about the stack lots and things. We talked a little bit about the, the homes. Ms. Miller, you've, you live in a home that's on the waterfront. From the front of your home, it looks like you've got a single-story house, but you've got a, a little bit bigger house, right? Some of the homes, especially in Anchorage, you know, you look at those from the street...
Geez, I'll say.
My goodness, you know, it, it looks like a, just an ordinary home on the backside, my goodness.
It's like a ranch.
Three, three or four stories, right?
Right.
So we've got some challenges. Square footage is a challenge for us. I shared with Manager Fundenberg the other day, one of the hardest things as a, as an incident commander's sitting in the front yard, giving instructions, sending crews to work. You know, you're short-staffed, we're, we're staffed right now with seven. Our minimum staffing is six. So you take the incident commander out, you take the driver of the two trucks out, now you've got four people, three to four people to go attack the fire, to make the rescue, to make the grab if someone's still inside. So we need to increase our staffing to make sure that we're able to do that adequately and quickly. We've got some large homes. We're getting ready to add a taxpayer-style commercial district. Uh, we're, we're doing some things. And we have the same problems as everybody else. We have trouble getting people. Onboarding takes about six months for us. Um, you know, every, everything about Tegucay creates something new and different, you know, the, the terrain and those things. So, uh, our call volume in the last five years has increased two-hundred-and-twenty percent.
In the last how much, Tom?
Five years.
Okay.
Crazy, right?
What does that con, what like, what makes up that increase?
So it's, it's everything across the board, so...
That's a traffic wreck, it's a structure fire.
Yeah, so we're running about, uh, our medical response compared to our fire response is about fifty-five percent medical. So we're slightly higher on the medical side. And we, we continue to try and increase our medical response capabilities as well. So we, uh, in talking about manpower for medical, so we ride a third, three-person company, right? The standards nationally is a four-person company. So we're doing more with less currently. Um, you know, these, these new staff will just help us to supplement and have that. And again, Ms. Miller, looking into the future, the goal for us will be three additional people in the twenty-eight, twenty-nine budget. And that's, our growth will continue as things go. If you look at the call volume increase that we've seen in five years, we're at two-hundred-and-twenty percent increase. We're gonna see that density continue, right? Call volume goes up, we'll start missing calls because we're tied up on another call. It's happening now, but I don't have a good way to track that data yet. Uh, we're working through county communications to try and track those numbers. You know, we know that, you know, if we send a company out on a call, we get a boat call, for example. You know, that crew, we lost the engine company then in the peninsula. With the staffing model that we're looking at, we're gonna add a company, put another truck in, so we make sure that coverage is there, and we make sure that those people are there to answer the call in the peninsula. Or if one of the other companies is out, we'll have a company to help assist, and we'll have the numbers that we need to make sure that our people are safe and our community's safe. So to give you some other stats, uh, this year, we've seen an increase in structure fires, with a hundred-and-fifty percent increase already this year in Tegucay. So...
Chief, can you break that down?
Yeah.
Say a hundred-and-fifty, is that, you went from one to two?
So, no, we've...
Ten to fifteen?
Yeah, I've got the data in front of me. So we've had sixteen structure fires that we've responded to since January. Of those, nine were in Tegucay. Now, two were significant, where, you know, we had to get the families out of the homes, and there was substantial loss. Families been displaced, right? And they're still not back in. So the others were, and I'll share with you a story. Three weeks ago, you guys were sitting in the council meeting, I was in the back. We had a lightning storm come through, right? When the lightning storm came through, I got up and left. We had a lightning strike at Riviera Apartments. Lightning hit the building. It fried the electrical panel for the alarm system. It actually, the building took a direct strike. Our department was the only department on that call because there were no other resources on this side of the river because everyone was out. All the other companies were out. We had nobody else coming but the sixth that we had on duty that night. So, you know, we talk about numbers and the importance of safety. If we had to evacuate, if that had been burning and we had to do an evacuation, you know, numbers are very important. And, you know, for us to make sure that we get the people out is crucial. You know, then we worry about the structure, right? And taking care of the incident, but...
Where will this put you? You said, so right now you got a company of three, so you got one company at Station One, one company at Station Two?
That's correct.
So these three additional firefighters, will, you'll, you'll have three companies all the time?
We'll have three companies. It'll be three, uh, Engine One at Station One, right now is not staffed. Uh, and I'll tell you that, that I have gone by and picked it up on the way to a structure fire. So it, it happens, you know, again, being short-staffed, you try and do what you can to manage, right? The ladder had been dispatched down off Dam Road in River Lake Community to a structure fire. They pulled up with a fire, a working fire, and the next dude was coming, but they were in a squad, uh, just a pickup truck, basically. I stopped by to pick up the engine because I knew there was nothing else coming close that had water on it. So it just goes back to the point, we're a short-staffed department, we're a small department. Mutual aid's not always coming, you know, and we've gotta, we have to plan on making initial tack, the initial grab. You know, we, we've gotta reach out. We don't want any family members to pass away. We wanna be able to go in there and get them as quickly as possible.
So this'll give you, I...
This, this will give me an additional truck.
Okay.
It'll put that engine in service every day.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir. So right now, what we've got is we've got the ladder that's staffed at, at Station One. It is staffed currently with four people. The, the plan is to move one of those people to the engine and put a second person on that truck. We don't ever want a truck to go out of a building without at least two people on it, right? And the engine in the peninsula is staffed with three.
Okay.
So that brings our total number up on shift eight.
And that's each shift?
That's each shift.
Okay.
And then you, you said that for twenty-eight, twenty-nine, you were looking at three additional?
Yes, ma'am. That'll get us to three, three and three optimal, and the standard, the standard across the nation is four on each, each company. And, uh, you know, quite frankly, we've gotta do some facility changes before we can get anywhere close to that. Station One is not, will not house that number of people. So, you know, we may come back in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and we've talked to an architect about trying to figure out how we make it work with the footprint that we've got. So, uh, just like you said, forecasting a little bit, looking in the future, you know, call volume, demographics, those things, what are we looking at? Where are we going? So always trying to just be ahead and provide as much information for you guys as we can.
And would it make any, because I don't, I, I'm, I don't do what you do, so I know that you, you think through all the staffing, et cetera, but would it be something to consider? Because between now and twenty-twenty-nine, um, there's going to be a couple of years where there, there are no additions.
Right.
Would you be able to break that up so that it's, it's added staff on a yearly basis versus skipping years and adding like a big chunk of, of budget?
So we work three shifts, and we, we, we could do that. I'm not saying that this is, that that's a no. Uh, we work three shifts. So if, for example, we were to get three people this year, we'd put that second engine in service, which would provide the, the additional safety for our community, right? We come back to you next year and we ask you for one person, but it doesn't fix it but on one shift. So we could, we could make it work, uh, but thirty-three percent of the time, we'd be fully staffed at three, three and three, right? The rest of them, we'd have to put into service as we got them, as you guys allowed us to have as far as budget numbers, right? So it's not optimal. Uh, the optimum number's four, four and four according to national standards, but we're coming to you and asking you for a forecasted number of three, three and three. And that's based on demographics, call volume and those things.
And I, I do wanna add, based on mine and chief's conversations, right now, you, you've heard him a couple of times mention the national standard. OSHA is starting to get involved, so it may become a compliance issue at some point in the near future. Uh, chief, if, if, I mean, based on what you've told me, it sounds like that, you know, it's, it's coming right down the road within the next four or five years where these standards are gonna become mandated at some point. And then, yeah, if we're, if we're not close, then it is going to be a massive budget hit whenever that does come, but...
How, how long does it take you to get folks up to speed, trained and, and working?
So we, we onboard someone, and it depends on their training level when they come to us. So, and I'll tell you, we've just onboarded two volunteers. They've got absolutely no training. It, it takes a long time, especially in a volunteer format, uh, just because they're like you and I, they work daylight jobs, they've got families, those kind of things. They're coming and they're, they're contributing back to the community, right? Uh, to get a volunteer up to, to paid staff could take a year or more. Uh, to get a paid firefighter, if we bought someone in with no training and we were gonna send them to recruit school, first of all, we've gotta wait. They do a recruit school quarterly at the South Island Fire Academy. We don't have the ability to offer recruit school here. Once we get them there, it's eight to ten weeks of training, uh, just to get their basic training. Then we gotta bring them here. We've gotta onboard them. We've gotta teach them things about curiosities of Tegucay. What are our operating procedures, those kind of things. So potentially another several weeks of recruit class here just to get them onboard. Then they go through a probationary period, so probably still at least six months to get them to where, you know, they're with somebody every day and they're doing the training together to continue to learn the special things about what we do.
Would you say like two years to, to have somebody trained and, and independent?
Yeah, I, I would say a year and a half, two years, because we do, we require some things we require of our firefighters as to, to become promoted because we've got so much water around us. Every one of our firefighters is water-trained. And again, it's waiting on classes to get to us and availability. It's a weekend class, but it doesn't come around, but quarterly at best. So yes, I, I would say a year and a half probably to get them to where they, they are exactly where we need them to be.
How does, and I think I've asked you this before, but refresh my memory, how does adding three people affect your overtime?
So it, it would affect us a little bit. So our, we, we pay mandatory overtime, and, uh, and this is a Fair Labor Standards Act. We don't have any choice. So our firefighters work twenty-seven-hundred-and-fifty-six hours of regular time, right? The normal employee is a twenty-eighty for a forty-hour employee, right? So twenty-seven-fifty-six, and then based on schedule, they're at least one-seventy-two. Some are closer to two-hundred hours to, to get to what's mandated by the FLSA, Fair Labor Standards. So twenty-nine, twenty-eight is, is the minimum number. We pay on a one-oh-six cycle, um, so there's some hours are slightly higher in, in overtime numbers, but, but yeah, so it's, it's, it's a, it's minimal. I mean, it's one-seventy-two, you figure one-hundred-and-seventy-two hours of overtime for each employee.
Basically, the only way to get rid of their scheduled overtime is to hire a fourth shift.
Yeah.
So adding these three people now and three people and, that's not adding another shift at all?
It won't fix it.
Just covering a truck.
No, it wouldn't fix it. We'd have to add a whole nother shift, like, uh, Manager Fundenberg said. The, our overtime is our overtime. This, we've got training overtime in there, but, um, really to, to try and minimize overtime because of the new hires, it won't. It, it'll, it'll help us, potentially help us a little bit because right now we've got some overtime monies there to help to cover stuff and vacations, uh, just because we've got minimum staffing numbers.
Chief, appreciate everything that you and your team do, especially with your staffing level.
Yes, sir.
Last year, I know that you requested three as well, and we weren't able to do that, and you're back again showing the need for, um, having additional three with the increased level of calls with Wendell Woods, you know, finishing out the build-out with, um, River Lake or Lake Wood, Lake Wood coming onboard, and then Main Street Tegucay coming onboard. It's better for us as a community to prepare and be proactive as opposed to reactive because we wanna have people in place when all that stuff happens because the calls are gonna only increase with the additional number of residents that are gonna be moving into our community. So I support you for this.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here and doing what you do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm good, too.
Any other questions for chief?
I had one clarification. So the, these three firefighters, that'll get you to three companies, three on each truck engine?
It'll give us two on Engine One at Station One.
Okay.
Uh, and like I said, the, the goal is, you know, to come back to you twenty-eight, Uh, and like I said, the, the goal is, you know, to come back to you twenty-eight, twenty-nine, ask you for three more.
And what would that give you?
Three, three, and three.
That would give you the three, three, three. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yeah, it will. That'll, that'll get us to that. And, uh, you know.
And then we have to big, build a bigger firehouse?
We've got to figure that out. Uh, so we're, we've, you guys know there's, you put some money in our budget, you allowed us to use some money this year. So we're working with an architect to see what we can do inside our footprint. Quite frankly, the building was built too small.
So, so we built a, we built Station One too small to begin with?
Yes, sir.
Station One?
Yes.
Whose idea was that, to build it that small?
I, I wouldn't hear for that.
I know you weren't here.
I don't know.
But that's, that's, that's kind of cutting your nose off, spite your face. I mean, it, as far as square footage goes, when you're building square footage, it's nominal. As far as square foot, to, to go ahead and build what you need.
During the build, yeah.
In the future, instead, it's like T K Elementary. They did the same thing with T K Elementary.
Renovation or additional square footage is, is expensive.
I would, I would say I, I support your request and, and to Councilman Miller's, Councilwoman's Miller, Miller's comment. I, I'd rather s- see a way for you to grow into the next three that you're going to ask for in twenty-nine and do it a little bit at a time, if you can, if it makes sense for staffing. I think that's easier on, on a budget, you know, to be prepared for, you know, annually. Instead of taking a hit for three, um, prepare the budget and the revenue structure that's needed to, to try and afford you, you know, one a year for the next three years or something like that.
I, I'd like to, and, and this is an ask, um, but in considering that, because I, I, I do totally respect your, your, this is your business. This is, this is what you do and this is, this is what you're asking for. I would like to see if, if it was more staggered, what are the cons for that? I think, um, Mayor Gray highlighted one of those, which is the training that has to happen before someone is ready to go, right? And you probably have some attrition that happens also, so that as, as you're hiring, you're also replacing, so that I'd, I'd like to kind of see it from your perspective. This is why I'm asking it this way, and we can do it this way, but this is what some of the challenges are. Because I, I can voice some of them, but I think that there's probably others that I'm, I'm not aware of.
Yeah. Well, and I, I agree. So, you know, the, the ask for the, the dollar amount that's in the budget, it's going to be less than that, because it's going to take us the time to hire, right? And, uh, you know, if we have to send people to recruit school, we don't know when that timeline is. We have to work with the Fire Academy, and it's on their timeline at that point. So there's some, there's some challenges on our side. And we've, like I said earlier, you know, we've, we're giving money. Mayor Funterberg hates when I say this. We're giving money back. We're pushing money forward to next budget year, because we simply couldn't get the classes. And, uh, because of instructors and that. So that, it is a challenge, and, you know, we're asking you for a budget number, because it's a budget number, right? But we, we also recognize when we continue to ask you for that number that it's going to be less than that, because it's going to take us a little bit to get them onboarded, get them hired. We may not find a firefighter, two, you know, someone that's got all the certifications and training that we need them to have. We may not find them initially, and it may be that we've got to send them away to school and, uh, you know, get them up to speed. So, uh, you know, that's, this is a budget number to work with. And, and quite frankly, in the time it takes us to hire someone, it won't be that, that significant. And to your point, uh, we can look at that. And I'd be happy to sit down and talk to you and, you know, work through the, the scenarios with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we good with the three and then look at the additional after that?
I'm good with the three.
Yeah, in the future.
I love it, yeah.
I am.
And then additional after that.
If it works for you.
Thank you.
Yep.
So Council, um, this may be a little hard for y'all to see, but if you'll look at the screens, I'm going to try to zoom in a little bit.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
So. Based on the adjustment on the Wildlife Management, okay, that brought your, your new total revenues over expenditures of two-point-four-one million dollars to the good. If Council, um, yeah, for the, for the nine months, correct. Uh, because when, when we bring this in the budget ordinance, that, that's what, those are the numbers that we're going to be, we're going to be working on. Um, so with the P D adjustment, taking that out, that takes you down to two-point-two million dollars, all right? With the Parks Rec projects that y'all just discussed with Dustin, that brings it down to two-million, thirty-two-thousand dollars. With the additional personnel, uh, that were just presented to you, that puts you at one-point-seven, a little over one-point-seven million dollars, all right? Um, that is a very, very good budget.
Is that including H R P D and fire?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's, that's every, every single person, personnel request is affected by the general fund.
Pretty solid.
No, so the equipment request, um, I want to circle back to. So as we presented and talked about this in the prior workshop, we would envision doing all of this equipment with, um, with a short-term capital lease for years. Now, uh, as Chief Crosby mentioned, he does have room in his budget, uh, for this current fiscal year to take, take care of the radios, okay? So I could zero that one out. So that would put your, your borrow, your ask, if you will, at eight-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-nine-hundred dollars, all right? In, in total, and that includes T C U D, Stormwater, and, and the list that you, that you see on that, okay? Including your general fund. So that would not have a budgetary, none of those would have a budgetary impact until the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year. That's when first payment would be due, because it's one year in arrears.
I just, I got to say, we got one-point-eight million dollars and we're going to lease, we're going to take a loan?
On that?
August, September, October, three months of revenue versus expenses. That's all we got to reserve.
This is what, well.
Just saying, I don't know anybody from a, I understand we may make a half a percent if the loan comes in at four and we're getting four and a half on our thing. And this ain't, I, I understand the finances to that. But at the same time, we've been paying off these short-term leases for three and a half years now, trying to get rid of them, because it's just a gift that keeps on giving, right? And every year we add more short-term leases, more short-term leases, and all of a sudden our short-term lease payment's half a million dollars a year. And you had the fire truck bond, you had the, you know, these other ones, and we have the cash. If we don't spend it on.
We need that, we need that cash to operate July, August, September, October.
That's one-point-seven million dollars over.
Correct. So that we have cash in checking, we're not messing with reserves. What you have in reserves, it is earning interest until late November going into December.
But remember, please, please remember, we had Hurricane Alina hit us. And we had to spend two million dollars upfront to fix whatever, and that brought our cash reserves down, okay?
Mm-hmm.
But we've got how much of that back?
Well, well, um, one point, so we, I think we spent one point, more than two million, well, one-point-seven, and we go one-point-three back. We're waiting for FEMA to give us the addition. We're at six-point-nine million. We got to, we got to keep four million in the bank according to our ordinance. So I hate that, if something happens again with six-point-nine, we're, we spent two million dollars for another storm, that's four-point-nine.
We have a road cave-in.
Pardon me?
If we have a road cave-in or something like that.
Whatever, it could be, whatever, sinkhole storms, we'll be down to four-point-nine million. And then we have to pay eight-hundred-thousand dollars for this capital lease. Well, some of it's T C U D and Stormwater, but still, it, it, it brings our reserve down to, you know, a close to the four-million-dollar level. I think the capital lease, that's the way to go, Tom. I'm sorry.
If you look at. So here's, here's what you, so you, you got a couple of things here. So first, this is, this is what we're left with, revenues over expenditures on June thirtieth, right? With just cash funding the general fund portion, okay? So it takes you down to half-a-million dollars, all right? T C U D and Stormwater, they can't take, take on a cash payment like that. The budget won't, won't afford it. So now you're left with borrowing three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars versus the eight-sixty-four, or in total. So you've got the five-oh-four-nine-hundred, you've got the two-hundred, and you've got the one-sixty that makes up the eight-sixty-four-nine. If we're just borrowing on T C U D and Stormwater, that will be a higher interest rate, no doubt about it.
And banks will turn me down.
Yeah, because they, they don't want to do the short, the, the smaller. They will look at this as a, as a small amount, and we will struggle.
They have turned me down for half a million dollars, banks.
Have, have we done any more discovery on the trucks?
Yes, we have. So the conversation that you and I had, that's how we're already doing it.
Okay.
We're buying the chassis on state contract, and we're getting the dump beds on state contract, and they add too. Okay, so we are double-checking as far as specific with the napheed, like you talked about. But we're already outfitting exactly how you, you and I talked about.
Okay.
I had a conversation with Tim and Dustin. That's how we're already doing it.
Beautiful.
All right, so.
So we're going to, so are we still with, with Public Works, we're still going to replace the two, the two F-five-fifties?
Still looking at getting those two dump trucks there and, and then the one smaller one. Now, we did get one, that one truck back that Tim talked to y'all about at, at your first workshop.
Yep.
Here's the great news. We got one back, and then we lost one.
We lost one, yeah.
One went down, right? Now, we feel like that one's going to be able to be repaired. We don't have an ETA on how long that one's going to be down. Good thing is, we got one back. So unfortunately, though, we're still where we were at the last budget workshop, right?
So Stormwater, Stormwater still needs two new bucket trucks? I mean, uh, dump trucks?
That's correct. Plus, plus the four-fifty for, uh, Parks and Rec with a dump, with a dump bed on it.
Because I'm, I'm, I'm thinking if we're, if we're outfitting, if we're outfitting the utility trucks with the dump beds, and we're doing that for T C U D, for the replacement, that F-three-fifty replacement, the F-four-fifty replacement.
Now with T C U D, they're not, they're not doing dump beds. It's just the work bodies.
Okay, so.
T C U D doesn't have a dump truck.
Stormwater, Stormwater.
And a small one, a small light duty, lighter duty in Parks and Rec. Is what the request is.
If we take the, the nine-hundred for the additional equipment.
That would.
And we
Pop two-hundred out.
Put that in this, if we put that in this budget, what's, where's that put our reserve?
If you do what now? Say it again?
If we, we pay for all the equipment in this budget, instead of finance it, where's that put our reserve at the end of the nine months, five-hundred? Where's it, where's it, excuse me, where's that put our surplus?
Five-hundred.
Our bottom line, five?
Oh, if we take five-oh-four-nine-hundred out of our surplus right now and buy it?
No, you're saying if we pay cash?
Oh, yeah, that puts us, if we take the five-oh-four-ninety, that, wait a minute, I didn't do that right. Wait a minute.
It's, it's eight-ninety-seven. It's eight-ninety-eight.
Let me delete this, hold on. Because I was trying to listen to. One-point-two-oh-two.
That's, that's our, our surplus at the end of the budget?
That's what you would have at the end of the nine months. Yes.
If, if we pay for everything?
No, that's just on the general fund side of things. Now, you're still left with the T C U D. Now, it doesn't affect this budget, but you're still left with the T C U D, Stormwater issue.
Stormwater, right. That's what I'm asking.
And that's not include all of the personnel also?
Yes. There's, here's your additional, this is what you're left with after your additional personnel, one-point-seven. If you, if you cash fund the, all the stuff in general fund, you're left with one-point-two, and that's great. That's a good budget.
It is.
But it will hurt T C U D and Stormwater, because they are not in a position in an hour-month budget to pay cash for those things.
Especially Stormwater.
Especially Stormwater.
Stormwater takes away your projects with that amount.
So if I, if you were, so here's your Stormwater budget, okay? Right now, it's to the good by three-oh-five-two-thirty-six on the nine-month budget. So if I took two-hundred thousand out of that, it's to the good by one-oh-five-two-thirty-six, and it makes it very, very difficult to be able to operate Stormwater July. The nine-month budget year is what is, where we're trying to carry over cash until we start getting those, those revenue months, those heavy revenue months in December, January, February, to where we can leave our cash reserves as intact as possible, earning four-and-a-half percent, all right? Bob will not be able to get a bank to, to do a deal on whatever this total amount is, on three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. Because they've turned us down at half a million.
Or the interest rate would be very high.
Right.
Extremely high.
Is there, is there any value of, since it is a nine-month budget, is there any value in moving some of this, like, T C U D or Stormwater to the, the next budget?
To the twenty-six, twenty-seven? I think at, at a minimum on Stormwater, it's critical to get at least one truck for this coming fiscal year.
I'd say we don't.
And then we, and then we figured it out, you know, for that, for that nine months. I think it's critical to be able to, to continue to deliver the service levels of where we're at.
Well, we're down three, you're already down three dump trucks as it is. We got, we're operating two dump trucks to run this whole city. I've got two dump trucks for me at Burka, and I'm, you know, and I don't run them, I run them every day. I, I don't, they don't ever sit. So I'm, I'm not sure how we operate in the city with two dump trucks.
I got a question.
Very difficult.
What about, so we do the big lease, I mean, the big, whatever you refer to.
Yeah, the capital lease, yeah.
Capital lease.
Can we just pay it off in January?
You can't, generally, there's no penalties on those, on those capital leases.
We can pay it off at any time we want.
You can pay them off early.
If we have excess revenue, we can pay it off.
That's a good idea.
We have one-point-seven million dollars.
So your first, your first payment would not, so if, based on how long it takes to get vehicles, right? And you've heard it from, uh, you heard it from golf, you, you've heard it from, from P D, okay? If this gets approved, our budget year goes into, into effect in October. We probably don't, we probably don't have a, uh, we probably don't close on the loan, so to speak. At the earliest, it's going to be February, March, okay, of twenty-twenty-six. Your first payment doesn't come due until that same month, right? Twelve months later. So your first payment's not even due until twenty-twenty-seven. So it would, it wouldn't be due until the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year. At that point, we can have that conversation, does it make sense? Correct.
Yeah, you'll have.
You could. You absolutely could.
You'll have an opportunity to normalize where your cash reserve's going to be.
Correct.
Before a payment's due.
And, and I, I completely understand what you're talking about, right?
Tom, we've done that.
We, we, July, August, September, October, and November are hard months. It's, it's expenses over revenue. December picks up.
Tom, we've done that over the last few years, too. We've paid down some debt, because we could.
That's what I'm saying.
In this coming fiscal year, you will pay off your last capital lease.
I'm concerned we may have a, uh-oh, and need some cash reserve and, and we'd be in a good, we'd be in a good position for that.
We've got, we've got a big hurricane season right now, too.
That's what I'm saying. If we have a rainy day, we've got it. If, uh, if we don't need it, we can pay it off.
May I bring up the, you had brought up the eighty-seven mil situation. Where do we stand on that? That brings in extra one-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand dollars.
Well, that brings up an extra one-hundred-and-ninety, ninety-seven.
One-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, change.
Okay. But then we also have asks for the police department, the, those increases, right?
And that's in there.
That's in here already?
Yeah. Yeah. So if you look at this, if you look at the screen, it's not on your sheet, but you'll have to look at the screen. If you look at the screen, this number here is what the, what the revenue over expenditures goes down to after the police adjustment, okay? So that leaves you at two-point-two million after the police adjustment. After the Parks and Rec, uh, projects, that leaves you with two-point-oh-three-two million. After the personnel, so that's five personnel, three in fire, one in P D, one in admin, all right? That leaves you at one-point-seven million.
Okay.
One-point-seven million will get us till basically, what, about the end of November, give or take?
Uh, it'll get us beyond October, wouldn't it? We'll make it, get us.
It, it, it gives us, it gives us more wiggle room than one-point-two, obviously, because it's half a million more. Now, the eighty-seven mils, I mean, y'all have heard from time to, you know, throughout the evening, that there are future expenses coming up, right? Um, I've got the vehicle replacement plans and whatnot from, uh, Public Works slash Stormwater and T C U D at this point. There's also one other thing. There's also one other thing that I want to ask for, all right? And it's, uh, I would, I would ask for thirty-thousand dollars, um, for us to update our compensation study. I hundred percent love the fact that y'all are entertaining the idea of, uh, helping our police department get competitive, all right? We've got a lot of other staff, right? I don't know what the market's driving on them. It's not, I've, I've had several departments working on it. Fire, they're a little behind. When you're just looking at your basic firefighter one, E M T, which is the basic that we, we try to bring folks in at, we're a little behind, right? We're not astronomically behind, but we are a little behind on what other fire departments are paid.
Been it two years since we've done the, we did the study last time?
No, sir. We, we, so the fifth, we did it in twenty-twenty-two. So you're three years out. Typically, you want to do those every five years, which would put it in the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year.
Yeah, but we're also not in, in standard times either as far as labor markets.
I, I would agree.
We're just not.
I would absolutely agree. Um, I, I will give you a, for instance, um, on our general maintenance guys, and I'll talk Parks and Rec, T C U D, uh, Public Works, um, behind our, um, we're about a buck-eighty an hour behind what Fort Mill is, just on entry level, starting. Doesn't seem like a lot, but those guys are, those guys are making thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand dollars a year, total.
It makes a big difference when they get their paycheck, and they see an extra one-hundred-and-fifty bucks or, or eighty-five dollars.
I don't want to, but I also don't want to arbitrarily say, hey, Council, can we, can we start them at eighteen-eighty-one instead of seventeen, right? A, Fort Mill just did. Fort Mill just did theirs and that's where the, that's where I'm getting the 30,000 from. They didn't go with their highest, they didn't go with their lowest, they did an RFP. They spent $28,000 on the one that they're finalizing right now.
Fort Mill is a lot larger of a, of a community.
Oh, it is, it is.
So 30 is a little bit high in my, in my estimation compared to Fort Mill, so I would assume it'd be like 15 and 20.
The study's gonna be the study. It's not gonna matter how big you are.
Can we copy our neighbor? Can we just use Fort Mills? I mean, seriously.
I mean, they're right there. I mean, we can. Typically, you don't, you have your own, but I mean, I don't know.
We're in the same zip code. That's where I would.
I'm shoving tables.
At 10 o'clock at night, well, I like it.
I, I understand the premise. I would want to see theirs, see what cities, what markets they used on their comparisons and things like that. Because Fort Mill's also almost 40,000 in population. Today, they're almost 40,000 in population.
But, yeah, but it's, they're, they're still making widgets. Yeah, they're still making widgets.
I mean, I, I think.
We, we agree with you, what you're saying. We absolutely agree with what you're saying. So, but if we can possibly use Fort Mills, let's see what we can do that way and line it up, or maybe talk to the compensation study.
Well, when they're, when Fort Mill did theirs though, the cities that they use as comparables were the same population, which would mean that the number of employees is different and the compensation is going to be different. So I, I, I think that if we're, if, if we were to order a compensation study, it would be for like-to-like population.
We would also.
Which would be different than.
When we did, when we did the last one, we also asked them to look at Rock Hill and Fort Mill because we see them as our quote-unquote competitors on the labor force.
And, and I understand that, I understand using that as a data point, but to completely replace it, and I'm not, you know, venturing out to spend an extra $28,000 if we didn't have to, but it just doesn't make sense that we wouldn't try to compare two cities that are like us and then use those data points to, to see where, where we can be more competitive.
But my thing is, is that the, the labor pool that you draw off of between Fort Mill and TDK is not gonna be any different period whatsoever. So in that, if we're a city that's 13,000 or we're 150,000, those people are gonna get paid the same because the labor pool around us is what's influencing the price.
We can't compete with Fort Mill on every single.
You have to. You have to compete with Fort Mill, you gotta compete with Charlotte, you gotta compete with Rock Hill, you gotta compete with everybody around you, and even in the private market. You gotta compete with everybody to get the people here that are gonna be our employees.
Their budget is significantly different.
Doesn't matter. If, if you've got folks that are, they're gonna make $65,000 a year, you know, driving a tractor at, in Fort Mill, and they're gonna make $65,000 a year driving a tractor in Lancaster, then they're gonna have to make $65,000 a year to come here to TDK to be paid what they need to be paid, or they're gonna go somewhere else. And then our staff, we're not gonna have any staff, it's gonna eat out from the inside. And then there goes the TDK resort, there goes the bubble, there goes the dream because we're not, we're too cheap to pay our folks what they really deserve to be paid.
That's not what I said.
And that's what I interpreted it as.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying. Fort Mill's got a much bigger budget. They absolutely do. They've got a lot of commercial revenue that we don't have or don't have yet, right? And even with the addition of the growth, Main Street, it's still not gonna be the same budget by any stretch of the imagination. It's also not the same number of miles of road and linear feet of water lines and stormwater and things of that nature. You know, our PD deals with the exact same calls that every other law enforcement agency deals with. The only difference is the volume of it, right? Now, we don't, we don't deal with gangs, knocking on wood. But, you know, so, yeah, there are a lot of similarities. You know, the, the thing that, that has got us in our maintenance pool and where we have lost people is because they have gone to the private sector. You know, we just lost a great kid. I mean, I was looking for this guy to be just dynamo. He got a massive pay raise because he went to work for a private contractor doing grading work, you know, for development sites and things like that. Now, it was an astronomical amount and public sector is not gonna be able to compete with the private sector. Never has, never will. Yeah, that's not a thing. I'm not trying to compete with the private sector.
There are other benefits.
Yes, there, there are lots of other benefits in working in the public sector that you don't have in the private sector, for sure.
The, the public sector is not for everybody.
There's, there's a lot of benefits for working here in TDK than there is in working in Fort Mill. You know, you ask any developer, we'll, we'll get you through plan review and everything else. Eons faster than any of our peers, including the county, because we are smaller, yeah? We can take a look at, at the Fort Mill compensation study and see what the apples-to-apples are and have that conversation. That won't be a problem. Yeah, I want to see everything that's in that study, see how it lines up. But I don't know that their ranges are gonna be terribly different, right? They're, all of their positions are gonna have a grade point, you know? What our positions are graded out or what their positions are graded out, because it has to do with the techni- basically, the techni-, the technicality of the job, right? So you, you know, so the, the grades will, will be the same, but the salary scales, their salary scales may be a lot higher than what ours should be. I don't know. We adjust our salary scales every year by the cost of living. That's how we, we try to maintain where we're, where we're at, right? We don't have anybody right now that is on staff or coming in to join staff that is below the minimum of the range. We got a ton of people that should be at the midpoint that are not. You know, that, that they are below the midpoint and they've been in that position for seven years. You know, and that's, that's what, that's what we use as a midpoint for a position. So, yeah, I, I love our staff. I think our staff is absolutely amazing and I know y'all feel the same way. But I also don't want to just arbitrarily just start, okay, well, Fort Mill's paying this, yeah. I told you, Fort Mill, they're about a buck eighty more than us. City of Rock Hill, for those entry-level maintenance position, 35 cents more an hour, right? Fort Mill starts you higher than what Rock Hill does on an entry-level maintenance position. That doesn't make sense, right? And when you're, when you're, if you're looking at a population size and, and budget standpoint, Fort Mill wanted to be competitive and they wanted to make sure that they could fill their spots and they could attract quality talent. And ultimately, that's what it gets down to is being able to pay to be able to attract the right people and not the person that, well, two months into it, it's like, well, that didn't work out. Now they're going, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta find somebody new.
We, we love this act. We love this act because we do love the city.
Absolutely take a look at it and I will report back and, and we can have those conversations. Obviously, once I get it door and I gotta have some conversations and things like that and we'll, we'll circle back around with you. So to, to try to wrap up this evening, if we can, because we are getting it 10 o'clock.
Yep.
My understanding right now, based on the conversations, is the PD adjustment goes in, the Parksham Rec projects go in, the additional personnel go in, we do a capital lease, and then as we're preparing and getting ready for that 26, 27 fiscal year, we potentially pay that off early. You keep gaining it, yes. Well, you're not gonna gain interest on it because we're gonna be using it as operational cash. But yes, yes.
I would, in doing that, the paying out, paying off the capital lease, I would like to make sure that it's a priority, that it's in the budget when we go to approve it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would ask everyone here, remember this conversation.
Yes, oh, it's, 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 yes, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. We, we understand the, the direction, that whenever that first payment is due, which should be in the 26, 27 fiscal year. The good thing is, it, I'll be quite honest with you, council, my favorite part about tonight is this is the last time we will be doing budget workshops in the summertime. The downside to tonight is staff will begin doing budget preparation in February. But we'll get to have these workshops in, in March and April.
I'm comfortable with all those things, but one of the projects.
Yes.
One of the projects that's on there, the Windward median for 40,000, I, I'm, I don't want that. So I, I don't know if you guys want that. Was it?
That was the one we were talking about earlier.
Yeah, we're gonna take out the trees.
So we've got 40,000 in this year's budget to take out the trees.
Brian, a big piece of that is.
Because I don't go down there that often, so I don't know what the road really looks like, but I just know.
So we've patched, we've patched and fixed the, the root issues. We have patched and fixed that, okay? So that was last fiscal year. So for this fiscal year, it was, okay, eliminate the problem, which are, which are the tree roots, yeah, especially those pines.
Outbound lanes of Windward when you're coming out from the circle, like from Anchorage, it's, it'll knock your feelings out.
It would. Not anymore. We fixed it.
Right, correct.
So, but, but that will be a problem again. I'll be honest with you though, council, and I'll, I'll, I'll talk to, to Tim and the appropriate staff tomorrow, but I don't know that it's 100% of those trees coming out.
I would like to see some kind of rendering.
It's, it's, it's not, it, it's not every single tree in those two medias coming out.
But it would leave an impact to where you want to put something else in.
Right.
Also, the other strawberry's gonna support the existing trees that's in there.
Right.
Tim would speak more on that.
Most of those trees are pines, which are very shallow roots, which means like that house that had that tree that fell on top of it the last windstorm. I get that they're not the most ideal. I also get the fact that when you chop down trees, everybody goes, oh dear Lord, right?
Yes.
We, we all do. We, we get that. That's why it's so important to have that visual of saying, this is what, this is why we're doing it. This is what the cost of it is, but this is what we're going to end up with.
I will work to, by your August 18th meeting, getting you some type of rendering that's not drawn by us, all right? So that it gives you a better visual representation. I mean.
That would be good.
Our staff is extremely talented. This is not in our wheelhouse, but I can, I can get somebody to put that together based on.
And everything that.
Who'd you do the one for Dustin?
All of the, the beautification parts that have been done, you know, all the median stuff, all the, the monument stuff. Those flower, everything about it has just made, made it so much prettier to drive down TDK Drive. So I, I don't have any doubt that what the plan is, is going to end up being just as impactful.
Yep, right.
But it would be really good to have everybody come along with us rather than be shocked by it.
Completely understand and we can work to, to get that done for you. So the millage, all right? So if you go to 87 mils, so I'm gonna go back up to the revenues, I'm just gonna do this very simply. Lord. So, well, I'm gonna get up to the top. So if I, Bob, give me the exact number, please. 192 what?
192-233. 192-233.
Okay, now, give me a second, let me, let's just drag this down. So we're doing everything, if you, if you only roll back to 87, then that puts you at 1.899 to the good. Yes. Five, five, five in general fund, yes, sir. Correct, mhm.
But that's extra revenue to be used.
It, it definitely puts you in a position to make it a lot easier without having to sacrifice anything operational in 26, 27. If, if the plan is to pay off that lease, right? That we would be bringing to you probably at your November council meeting via resolution. It definitely makes that a lot easier, for sure. Right.
Yeah, the bottom doesn't drop.
Right. It definitely, it definitely helps down the road, for sure.
Now we're planning, yes.
Mhm.
That's what we want to get.
Yes. Right.
Right.
Is it possible to have, or you said 192,000, that's, that's what the, the, you know, the total. I would like to see this 192,000, this is, this is the good that it's going to do, rather than it just being a number. We're, we're using X amount that's going to support our police department, is going towards our fire department. We're using X amount to.
I mean, ultimately, that's what you're doing, yeah.
It is, but.
We can help craft that narrative for you. Yes, ma'am.
Because I think that that will really help people understand that there's a purpose for it. It's not a, it's not a grab, it's not random, it's not unnecessary. There's, there's a very specific need that we, that we have and that that's what those funds are going for. That would help me understand it, that would help me verbalize it when I'm asked.
Understood.
And I think it will help all of us know what it's, what it is and the, and for prosperity, when we are not the ones sitting on the, in the seats, it'll be in writing. This is what, this is what it was intended for.
It helps us with down the road with the impact fees going away down the road too.
Yeah.
And it, right now, it's covering that gap of getting, because we're, we're increasing the salary of the PD to stay competitive and we're hiring three more firefighters to keep up with the growth and the, and the man of their company. I mean, that's a loan right there, almost 500,000.
Correct.
And we're only going up 196.
Yeah, I mean, and you're. On a 500,000 house annually, the difference between, well, I did it off of where we are now. You're talking about 221, but let me redo this off of the 85, or the 85.1. You're talking about 43.70 annually on a 500,000 house.
And we're still rolling the mills back too.
And you're rolling them back two points, correct.
So, I mean, I don't know if anybody else is rolling back millage rates other than us.
I don't, I don't know what Fort Mills will be.
Fort Mill rolled back previously and then they added back.
Yeah, yeah.
Or they can just change the value of a mill. You can't do.
I think we've been very fortunate, 15 years without a tax increase for TDK itself.
It's been a blessing.
With Fort Mill School District going up in Yaw County, we're the only, we didn't, we haven't raised a tax.
They're the only ones that raised it.
What town do you live in? A 10th and 2th?
Right.
So as it stands right now, at least from what we've been told, Fort Mill School District is going up on your 6% tax items. So that's renters and your boats, cars, you know, things like that, 21.2 mils on the, on the 6% ratios. It's going 21.2. It does not appear that the county is increasing their millage at all and the school district is not increasing on your property tax. Who's school district? Oh, no, they didn't. It's, I don't know if they're, well, when, when Bob, when Bob asked the question, what is your millage rate? They said, we're not sure yet, and this was on July the 8th.
They're still trying to work those.
Eight days after their fiscal year started.
So Charlie, is there anything else that you need from us?
In the 30 grand, you'll let us know about the compensation.
We will, we will talk through that internally.
And then council, anything else that you, that you guys want to say? Counsel?
No, thank you.
Like to make a motion to adjourn? I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we adjourn.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, everybody for hanging in.
Good job, staff. Thank you.
Sorry.